Okay. Good evening, and I'd like to call the regular meeting of May 6, 2025 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Councilmember Smith has volunteered to sing the National Anthem. Clerk, please take roll call.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Kirialco.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protempor Kazdin.
Here.
And Mayor Perotti is absent.
Okay. Before we begin, we'd like to introduce our live Spanish interpretation service for tonight.
I have a brief bilingual message to share with everybody. Tengo un mensaje breve bilingüe para compartir con todos ustedes. Tenemos interpretación simultánea entre el inglés y el español para esta reunión. Si quieren escuchar todo lo que se va a compartir, participar en español, tengo algunos auriculares aquí disponibles para hacerlo. Me pueden dejar saber, pueden alzar la mano para pasárselo, o pueden pasar al cuarto aquí de lado para pedirlo. So, we have simultaneous interpretation between Spanish and English available for today's meeting. If you'd like to follow along in Spanish, participate in Spanish, I have some listening devices available for you to do so. You can let me know, raise your hand, or pass along to the room next door, and I will gladly help you out with all of that. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. City Attorney, do we have a report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. So, for the closed session item read into the record earlier this evening, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a public forum for items that are not on tonight's agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Clerk, do we have any speakers for public forum?
Yes, we do have one in-person speaker slip for Phoebe Manser. Those of you on the Zoom webinar, please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Manser. I am excited to share with you two upcoming events that highlight and support Old Town businesses. And now, we're ready to begin enrolling both businesses and community members. Bike and Bi-Local, Saturday, May 24, 9 to 11 a.m. This fun, family-friendly event is sponsored by Community County, Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, Greater Santa Barbara County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Move Copyright Printing and Shop Everytown. Businesses are encouraged to contribute coupons or promotional materials to be included in the goodie bags for attendees. Participants check in at 9 a.m. at La Hacienda Mexican Restaurant for a breakfast snack, drink, and to pick up their goodie bag. From there, they'll have the option to enjoy a scenic bike ride to Galleta Beach and back, following the route optionally using the Shop Everytown mobile app, scanning QR codes at stops along the way, and at participating businesses to earn points. These points enter them into prize giveaways sponsored by the Hispanic Chamber. Our second event is an Old Town Dining Challenge Series, June through December. We are thrilled to launch a six-month series of dining challenges presented by the Greater Santa Barbara County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Wakefield Radio 805, and Shop Everytown. Each month will feature themed culinary challenges, giving restaurants the opportunity to attract diners with seasonal or specialty menus. Diners will scan QR codes using the Shop Everytown app to earn points and be entered into the monthly prize drawings. Restaurants will also compete to be featured, a featured spotlight on Wakefield 805 Radio. The honor goes to the business with the most QR code scans in a given month. These events are designed to increase foot traffic, community engagement, and support our local businesses. I encourage all Old Town businesses to participate and make the most of these promotional opportunities.
Thank you. Very exciting.
And I have no further speakers for public forum.
Okay, then I will close that forum. So, City Manager, are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. There are no amendments or adjustments, but I can go into my City Manager Report if you like.
I would like.
So, I have a number of events coming up in May. May is a very busy month, so bear with me. There's a lot coming up. This Thursday, May 8, from 5 to 8, is our first Meet Me in Old Town, so kind of related to some of the events that Ms. Manser just went through. This is at the Galleta Community Center this year. So, you might remember it was a block party last year. It has been moved to the Galleta Community Center. This is the first of three community block-style parties, Meet Me in Old Town. There'll be live music, local business specials, food trucks, refreshments, games, vendors, and more. So, again, Thursday, May 8, from 5 to 8 at the Community Center. Next up is Saturday, May 17, and this is a 20th-year anniversary celebration of the acquisition of Elwood Mesa. This event is from 11 to 4. It starts at Elwood Elementary at 11, but then spills over to the Preserve for activities over there. Next up is a Senior Expo, Wednesday, May 21, from 9 to 1 at the Galleta Community Center. This information-packed event is designed to empower seniors, their families, and service professionals with valuable resources and information. And I think you'll hear more about this event in a few minutes later in the agenda. Also in May, it is Public Works Week. Public Works Week is May 21, or it's that whole week, but the event is May 21 from 4 to 6 at the Camino Real Marketplace. Join us for free, family-friendly event with Touch a Truck. There'll be trucks out there, interactive games for the kids. Come by and get to know public work professionals who are working in your neighborhoods. And then finally, the month of May is also Cycle Mania, and there's a number of bicycling-style events throughout the month. So, May is very busy. Come join those events in Galleta.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, that will be Item A1, Approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes of April 15, 2025. Item A2, 2025-2027 City of Galleta Strategic Plan. Item A3, Award of Contract for On-Call Video Production Services. Item A4, Award of Professional Services Agreement to Kitchell C.E.M. Inc. for Construction Management, Inspection, and Testing Services for the Galleta Valley Library Safety ADA and Building Improvement Project, CIP Number 9130. Item A5, Library Policy Amendment for Temporary Site at 6500 Hollister Avenue. And Item A6, Public Works Professional Services Agreements and Amendment with Solid Waste Solutions, Inc., Explore Ecology, and Flowers and Associates.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? New, a lot of new's. Okay, good. Clerk, are there any public speakers for any items on the consent calendar?
If any member of the public wishes to speak to a consent item, please use your raised hand icon, and I will call on you. And I am seeing none, Mayor Protemp.
Okay, thank you. I'd like a motion, please.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Great.
Okay, councilmembers, if you would, lock in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirialco.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protempor Kazdin.
Aye. Oops, okay. Thank you. Well, that concludes tonight's meeting. No. So, first, we have a presentation for our retiring Executive Assistant to the City Manager. And presenting this item is Councilmember Reyes Martin. First, do we have any public speakers on this item? You thought you'd... You can come up.
And this for Item B1, City Logo Title, Don Christensen, Executive Assistant to the City Manager.
Look at everyone that came to see you. Well, it's my pleasure to get to share this with you. And I will read what just says, "An appreciation of your dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the City of Galleta, February 8, 2016, to April 30, 2025," to Don Christensen, I don't know if he said, "our executive assistant to the City Manager." You are, like, in many ways, the Wizard of Oz behind the scenes. The public and many folks that come to our council meetings don't necessarily know your name or know who you are, but you are someone that definitely made sure everything was going according to plan. All the trains were running on time, and everyone knew where they needed to be and when they needed to be somewhere. So, thank you so much, and I know that we all will probably have a couple words to say, but we just wish you all the best in your retirement, and so glad to get to recognize you tonight. And I know Robert Wilson wants to say something.
If I may, you turn around for a second, Don. There's actually a big audience here. So, yes, if you don't know Don Christensen. She is a little bit behind the scenes, but has been here nine-plus years, almost 10. She almost got there. So, yes, Don and I have worked together for two and a half years, and so I want to be maybe the first to kind of make some acknowledging comments here. And then I do think probably the council wants to make some comments. So, Don and I have worked together for two and a half years. She was here when I got here, and we met on my first day. I'll never forget that day, and I have a quick story about it in a second. But, Don, besides what Councilmember Reyes Martin just said, really embodies, I would say, a commitment to public service, an attention to detail, and really a love for Galleta. And just really the way she carries herself around here, and comments were already made, kind of the Wizard of Oz, really what she does for me, for the staff, and for the council is just amazing, and she's been doing that with that love of Galleta for 10 years. So, the quick story, I didn't quite have the, and this kind of embodies the comments I just made, I think. I was really impressed, and I just didn't forget it. So, I hadn't quite got the job yet. I came down, I think I was almost there, but maybe a couple weeks to go, came down, stayed in the Galleta Hotel. I checked into my hotel, and there was this wonderful welcome basket or bag with all these cool Galleta items in it. Food products, a Galleta book, coffee, some other things, and it was just really, really nice. And so I was like, wow, this is super cool. I hope I get the job. And three weeks later, maybe a month later, I come in for my first day. I did get the job, and I come up, and Don's already at her desk, and I introduce myself, and we meet. And then, right after we meet, I said, "I'm guessing you had something to do with the welcome basket that was in my hotel three weeks ago." And of course, it was Don, and it was such a nice touch, and I just never looked back. So, it really kind of embodies her attention to detail, like I said, her commitment to Galleta, and just everything she does behind the scenes for this organization. So, thank you. It was a wonderful two and a half years. Congratulations on your retirement. I'm a little jealous, but not quite. But, yeah, wonderful that you made this decision.
Or do we go up and then speak?
Well... Yeah, we can speak and then go up. And if there's any...
Hi, Don. So, this is kind of a funny way to begin, but I'm really hard to work with. And what I mean by that is I have, at various times since we've been working together, I had this job and a part-time job. When we started, I had a full-time job, then I went to a part-time job, and now I'm back to a full-time job. And you're so instrumental in making sure that the meetings that aren't these meetings happen, and those meetings need to have council members like myself. And I know trying to juggle 10, 15 different people's schedules that need to be in different meetings can be really challenging. And you just, you always did it with such grace and such heart, kindness, understanding. You know, when I was first getting started, it was, you know, it could be stressful when you get double-booked, and it's an important thing in your other life. And you were always so great about it, and we were able to get into a really good rhythm, and that made my life so much easier these last seven years now. And I just, you know, thank you because my life is a lot easier, and I've been able to be more present and a better servant because of you. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Don, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for helping me with my transition to the council, and it helped everything go really smoothly. And, you know, I know that doesn't get seen by the general public, and it left me thinking like, wow, like, right? We've all probably thought in our lives, like, we need, we all need like an assistant to keep, like, even in our personal lives, right, to keep us on track. So, in any case, I just wanted to say I really enjoyed working with you, even though my time was brief, and I wish you all the best in your future. Thank you.
And I guess I would, first, let me note that I know Paula would have wanted to be here to see you off, and she couldn't, but she would have. And I, you know, reminded of, I think I mentioned it, the movie Shane at the end, you know? Shane, don't go, Shane. You know? And so I could just see us all out there, you know? Don, don't leave, don't... Anyway. But it's been great working with you, just to have you as a comrade, as someone to talk to, and just a sort of a friend. And you're also incredibly professional and hardworking and dedicated, and I wish you the best.
And I'm gonna miss your dogs. Oh, one last time, okay.
They're here.
Any other people seeking to speak?
If any member of the public on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you. I am seeing none, Mayor Protemp.
Shall we... Oh, you want to speak or go picture first?
Hi. I just wanted to say what an honor it's been to work with all of the talented staff here. And I have a little, sort of a little story, I think is timely. But when I, my background was in the private and nonprofit sectors. I'd never worked in government. I actually wasn't interested in working in government. I had this impression that government employees were complacent and in it for the paycheck. And then I got to the City of Galleta, and nothing could be further from the truth. Such a talented, hard-working, innovative, passionate group, and I've just really been fortunate to be a part of this work family. And council, I've really enjoyed working with you and with Robert, City Manager. Council has always made me feel appreciated. So, I mean, it's really easy to work hard when you know that, and you know. So, and then I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our former City Manager, Manager Emeritus Michelle Green. If it hadn't been for Michelle, I wouldn't be able to do this right now. So, I'm really grateful. So, it's been wonderful. I'm gonna miss you guys so much, so.
Wait, wait, don't go anywhere. Picture time. Okay. So, next, we have a proclamation of the City Council for recognizing May 2025 as Older Americans Month. And let me find, is this the right one? This, okay. And Councilmember Smith will present this. Thank you. I have, yeah, you're right, I have this whole area in there. My label's on.
Okay. So, we're excited to share this proclamation of the City Council of the City of Galleta, California, recognizing May 2025 as Older Americans Month. Whereas, Older Americans Month is observed nationally in May as a time to recognize the contributions of older Americans, highlight aging trends, and reaffirm our commitment to serving older adults. And whereas, this year's Older Americans Month theme, Flip the Script on Aging, aims to transform how society perceives, talks about, and approaches aging, while encouraging individuals and communities to challenge stereotypes and dispel misconceptions. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, the City of Galleta joins the national tradition of designating the month of May as a time to celebrate the contributions of older Americans and rededicate our efforts to better serving their needs. And whereas, the City Council wishes to express its appreciation for past and continuing contributions of its older residents to the community and to our nation, and recognize that older adults are a vital and growing part of our city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Galleta hereby recognizes May 2025 as Older Americans Month. And this proclamation is signed by Mayor Paula Perotti.
Do you remember, we have public speakers now?
We'll pause for a photo.
Should we all come in? Okay. All right. There we go. That looks great. Ready? One, two. This one. That'll be the last. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith and members of the council for this proclamation. While this is not the first time that Galita has recognized May as Older Americans Month, it is the first time that we are doing so as we are the day-to-day program manager for the senior programs held at the Galita Community Center. In addition to other responsibilities and projects, your Parks and Recreation Team of Professionals, right here with me tonight, and the Neighborhood Services Department, are honored to provide services, programs, and activities Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the community center. The senior center is open during the week, and the facility has opportunities for seniors to engage in programs that enhance their mind, body, and soul, specifically designed for the unique challenges that our seniors are facing within our community. To celebrate Older Americans Month, the City of Galita is hosting the Third Annual Senior Expo, as you heard earlier this evening, on Wednesday, May 21st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Galita Community Center. This free event is designed to empower seniors, their families, and service professionals with valuable resources. Attendees will have the opportunity to connect with local organizations, discover valuable resources, attend informative presentations, and opportunities to connect with other community members and their families while building new relationships within the community. The event will conclude with a free lunch provided by our program sponsors. Please join us at the Galita Community Center on May 21st as we celebrate our older Americans and their contributions to our community. Thank you again.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, if any member on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you. I am seeing none.
Yes, we have.
I just wanted to briefly comment what a fantastic job you and your team are doing with, for the seniors at the community center. I happened to be at the community center last week for a different meeting, and I was walking around and stopped to watch a very intense ping pong match. And there were maybe eight people in there. They were sweating, they were laughing, they were having the best time. And it just really warmed my heart that seniors and older adults in our community have a space that they can go and make friends, spend time with each other, be active. So, just huge kudos to everything you and your team are doing. It was really lovely to see that.
Thank you so very much. I will share that last week, or the week before, during spring break, we had an, an older resident that works part-time in the schools, and because school was on spring break, she felt she had nowhere to go, and she went to the community center, and she just found new life for herself, and she engaged in the activities. And we're grateful that she reached out because it reminds us that all those little efforts matter, and we're just pleased to have her, and she's so excited about everything she has planned for the summer to come visit us and hang out with us Monday through Friday. So, thank you again for your kind words, and thank you for the opportunity to provide these services to our seniors.
Anyone else have comments? No? Okay. Well, then, as a, as an older American myself, thank you. Okay. And then finally, we have another proclamation recognizing May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And presenting this proclamation is Councilmember Kiriaka.
It's one of my favorite weeks of the year. As you make our job so much easier and you push so much paper and information, it's really important. So, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Galita, California does hereby recognize May 4th through 10th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Deborah Lopez, our Deputy City Clerk, David Cutia, Planning Commission Clerk, Nicholas Norman, and Management Analyst Blake Markham, for the vital services that they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Approved this sixth day of May 2025. Signed by our Mayor Paula Perotti. If we have people?
We don't know what to do. You have to tell us. What, you're the one who tells us.
So, I just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to acknowledge the hard work that the clerk division staff do. Where did they go? Ran away.
Back to work.
They ran away. And on that note, back to work, but thank you so much. They are a hard-working group.
That was fast. Any public comments?
Yes, I do have one in-person speaker slip. Megan Lee. Anyone on the Zoom webinar wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon, and I will call on you.
Hello, good evening. I'm, my name is Megan Lee, and I'm one of the interns at Senator Lamone's office. On behalf of Senator Lamone's office, we would like to, we would like to present City Clerk Deborah Lopez, Deputy City Clerk David Cutia, Planning Commission's Clerk Nicholas Norman, and Management Analyst Blake Markham. With the certificate of gratitude and appreciation of your commitment to serving the City of Galita, your admirable contributions as a city, as your admirable contributions as, through your roles, have wide-reaching impacts that will continue to preserve Galita's records and make information accessible to the Senate District 21 community. Thank you for your outstanding leadership in our community. Commendations are conferred in celebration of the Municipal City Clerk Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no other speakers for this item.
Would anyone like to speak on this item in particular? Well, I just would say thank you for all the hard work that you guys do in keeping, keeping us on time, on track. And I say this in particular, knowing that I'm reading the script that you wrote for me. So. Anyway, so, thank you for all you do. Okay. Clerk, please read the next item.
Yes, that will bring us to the discussion action item. Item C1, Award of Old Town Pride of Place Grants.
And Mayor Protem, Shannon Kern from our, the City Manager's office is gonna be making the presentation tonight, but as you can see, she's virtual. She's attending an economic development conference in Ontario, California. So, she was at that today. She'll be there the rest of the week, so we're pretty excited about that. That's one where I think I mentioned previously, or if I didn't, she actually applied for a scholarship for that conference, and she got it. And they paid for, they comped her conference, they paid for the hotel, and paid for a portion of her travel to go to the conference. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kern, and I assume you have a PowerPoint as well, maybe not, but we can, we can see you.
Yes, great, thank you. Thanks, Robert. Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. As, as Robert mentioned, I am participating remote, so I apologize for not being there in person with you all, but I do have a brief presentation that I will queue up and share my screen for. Are you all able to see the presentation on the screen?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. So, my name is Shannon Kern, Assistant to the City Manager, and I will be giving a brief presentation on the award of the Old Town Pride of Place Grant Program. So, to start off with a little bit of background, earlier this year, the council received a presentation on the Economic Development Strategic Plan and discussed the proposed program guidelines and criteria for the Old Town Pride of Place, or POP, P-O-P for short, grant program. At this meeting, council approved the initiation of this program and allocated $120,000 of funding for this program. So, after that meeting on February 3rd, the application period opened for this, for this grant period. It was open for four weeks on, until March 4th. And on February 18th, staff led a grant application workshop at the community center where businesses were invited to learn about the program and the application process. So, after the application period closed on March 4th, on April 2nd, the Economic Development Committee reviewed the applications and recommended funding awards to the city council. And so, that brings us to today. So, the, we received a total of 28 applications during the four-week period. The, and the total funding request was $530,407. That was the total amount that was requested through the applications. But of course, we know that we have $120,000 that's been allocated for this grant program. And so, the committee reviewed all the applications and recommended an award, recommended awarding 22 grant applications for funding. The grant awards range, but the average award is around $5,500. And you, in the attachment one of the staff report, you'll find a, a full list of the committee's funding recommendations, and then in attachment two, you'll also see all 28 applications that were received. And just as a reminder, the, the program goal of this, of this grant program was to promote the businesses in Old Town by enhancing the sense of place and attracting more customers to Old Town businesses. So, this slide shows a very small, brief snapshot of all of the, of all 22 grant applications that are recommended for funding. As I mentioned, the, the list in, is also in the attachment one of the staff report. So, I won't go through all of them, but this gives a, a quick view of them. And so, following the approval of these funding recommendations from council, staff will work with each grant awardee to finalize the grant agreements, which is also, the grant template is provided in attachment three of the staff report. It's a very brief, very simple grant agreement that, that council approved at the meeting in January with a, a end-of-program report that is, is due, I believe, June 30th of the following year of 2026. So, that's the, we'll finalize the grant agreements for all the, for all the funding recipients. We'll collect W9s from all the funding recipients, route the agreements, and, and to add them into our system as vendors. And then after that process is done, we would issue the payment of the grant award. And we will, staff will also be working with each recipient and providing technical and permitting support to, to the, the businesses that received grants and provide, you know, any necessary support and coaching where needed. And so, the staff recommendation is for council to approve the, the Pride, Pride of Place Grant Program recommendations of the Economic Development Committee Revitalization Committee, and then authorize the budget appropriations totaling $120,000 from the revenue expense accounts as identified in the fiscal impact section of the report. And so, that concludes my very brief presentation. I will turn it over to, to council for any questions.
Okay. I see one speaker. Councilmember Kiriaka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Not really so much a question at this point, as just kind of a, an introductory comment. We got a lot of applications from quite a few businesses, and it's always difficult when you're trying to make funding decisions and you have limited funds and a lot of interest, and a lot of great ideas for good things that could be done to help continue keeping Old Town Galita a vital part of the good land. But I am so pleased at the work of our staff, my colleague, Councilmember Reyes Martin, that we were able to come up with some recommendations that really run the gamut from public art to improving business frontages, to supporting businesses that want to band together and do some really cool activities, like some different market ideas, supporting different businesses that are banding together to try and do some combined advertising, you know, some of the local shopping centers like Kellogg Square coming together. A lot of, a lot of great ideas came out of this process. And then, at least one of these ideas is actually just supporting something that's a grassroots effort that has already been undergoing, the Old Town Walks. There have been Old Town businesses banding together for years and coming up with grassroots ways to support themselves, dating back to well before the construction project was underway. And it's great that the city is now following their lead, coming in behind them and providing, providing support. So, I'm really, really pleased that, you know, if, if these recommendations go through, we'll have a new dance studio, a place where people can get together and enjoy themselves in the evening and, and dance, new murals. We've been talking about having murals in Old Town Galita for a very long time, and to be able to have more murals is just a wonderful thing. So, I'm really happy with the, the work that has been done here. A lot of it is, is aspirational, and a lot of it is also just kind of brick and mortar, improving a frontage, making it easier for someone to find your, physically find your business and enter your business, or populate and support your business. There's a lot of great things here, and I'm really happy that we were able to come up with these recommendations.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you. I will just briefly add to that. You know, it was really a joy to, to read through all of the applications. It was so clear that each of the applicants really thought of some really creative, you know, ideas, and also made really compelling arguments for things that are more like brick and mortar or improvements that they clearly have been wanting to do for a long time, and they know that it will help their business. And so, to be able to really evaluate that and, and recommend, you know, as much as we could, was, was really a great privilege. I think we said at least a few times during the committee meeting, we wish we could fund everything. As you can see, there was quite, you know, a lot more requested than we had available. So, that's always a difficult spot to, to have to choose and, you know, allocate the limited resources that we have in the best way possible. And, you know, I don't think we're kind of closing the door on there not maybe being some future funding that's available in, in the, in the future, in seeing how this goes. And I just wanted to say, you know, and there might, you know, in terms of how we looked at the applications and how I looked at them, I mean, it really goes back to the, the title for this program, Pride of Place. And, and huge thank you to Ms. Kern for, you know, shepherding this process and, and being the creative genius behind it. You know, I really thought in all of the applications about that. You know, how do we help inject more pride into Old Town? Because there is a lot of pride there. There's a lot of pride and joy from the business owners who have been there for a long time and the ones who are new. And so, I think when we heard public comment, you know, in our committee meeting, I definitely heard that. I heard enthusiasm, I heard excitement about different ideas, a lot of folks working together or getting to know one another if they didn't already know one another. So, it's really exciting to be So it's really exciting to be here. Again, I wish we could fund more, but I am really excited about all the different projects that are on here and, and to see them, you know, come to fruition in Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I just had a brief follow-up question in terms of, there was a mention about some, you know, support or coaching that may be available to businesses. Can you just speak a little more to what, what that is or what, what processes different businesses may need some, some guidance with as they, if they're funded for a project?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith. So there, the, we are expecting some businesses, especially depending on the type of like events or programs that they do want to implement with this funding, that they may need some extra support in ensuring that they follow our, our processes and follow our Muni code. And so, so take, there are two applications that are recommended for funding for murals, and so ensuring that they follow the process that we have for, you know, through our planning department of kind of, you know, so making sure that they follow the process and, and follow our, our, our guidelines, especially as it relates to our, I believe it's called the Old Town Heritage District Guidelines for Architecture and Design. There's a specific document that talks about, you know, facade improvements and, and just kind of different design things. So that goes for some of the other applications that do talk about, you know, maybe updating an awning and, and other outside improvements. There are, there were other applications regarding like special events, and so ensuring that the applicants follow our special events permit process and indeed any vending, like street vending permits or getting encroachment permits that they may need. So those are some examples of some of the technical permitting support that we would make sure that they are aware of and that they follow and that we help them through the process. And then we're also working with our, we're partnering with Women's Economic Ventures, as we've done in the past, with providing some business services, advising and coaching for city of Galita businesses through our, through our agreement with them that, where they could help and provide free coaching for any businesses that may want it. And so particularly for any recipients of the grant award, it wouldn't be, you know, required or anything, but we are working with them, for them to provide this opportunity for Old Town businesses and businesses in the city and Galita in general, but having a focus on specifically the ones who are awarded funding, so they can talk to someone about like, you know, a, a business plan and, and making sure that they're spending the money in, in, that's in alignment with their application and in a strategic way. So those are some of the things that we have planned for how we're planning on providing technical and, and support to businesses. But this is the, kind of the first time that we're doing something like this, or at least that I'm doing something like this. So there, I'm sure there will be lessons learned, but that's what we're anticipating in, you know, once we get these grant agreements finalized.
Great, thank you for that. That's helpful to understand and, and good to hear. Thank you.
So I guess, I now empathize with Mayor Perodi, where I can add, everyone sort of said the things that I was going to say, and, you know, I agree with a lot of it. I would just add, you know, how much this is for small businesses, independent businesses, a very challenging time that, you know, and has been for 10 years or so, where they have to compete with remote sales and the Amazons and others. It's really difficult. And so a lot of this is trying to figure out how we can help the businesses in our area. And there's kind of two ways when you're thinking about a program, you know, if it's good. And the first is the design of the program, the, the goals of the program and so forth. And the second is the implementation of it. And the goals are really good with this program. It emphasizes, my computer just went off, but to the extent that the pro, that the, that the grants enhance the sense of place and attracting more customers to Old Town, to the extent that the program or service or event positively impacts the community, and whether the applications demonstrate collaboration among the Old Town businesses. And I think those are a really good set of criteria. And so the goals of the program are very well thought out, and I appreciate that. But I also, this is, I guess for Ms. Kern, the implementation of it is, it was just, there's a lot of really thoughtful pieces to it of the coaching that goes in, that you described in great detail already, and thinking about ahead of time of the permits that would be needed for events or for, you know, sales. And, you know, having the Women Economic Ventures support the businesses. So it's all, it's thought out well, it's really, you know, enhancing the ability to deliver something. And so, nice job. So any public comments?
Yes, I do have two in-person speakers. Any of you on the Zoom webinar app, which is to speak to this item, please use raised hand icon, and I will call on you. Our first speaker is Jacqueline Enda.
Counsel, my name is Jacqueline. I'm here on two roles, one of which I carry proudly, which is the Hispanic Chamber. And my other representation, of course, the other hat I switch on to now, is also the Casa de la Raza and all of our migrant advocacy. I'm here to speak a little bit about this process. Thank you for allowing this process to take the form that it has. It's very appreciated because our businesses came to the Hispanic Chamber to ask for help when they felt like they weren't being listened to. And to have Councilmember Karyak come out and step up and say, you know what, we're going to go out and meet with Casa, meet with folks from the chamber, listen to the businesses, and then take the step of trying to find this money to create some kind of support for the businesses when they're crying out for help, it's important that we've started this process. It is also important to note that the reason why we're here is because there are multiple factors. Of course, not only the restriping, but also the construction that has caused great impact to the area that should be your downtown and ought to be, will be your downtown. We expect that this process will continue forward with dialogue and partnership. The Hispanic Chamber not only created surveys of all of the businesses to get us to this point, more than 72, but we also created all of the input to be able to get to the process where we're at. And that's a grassroots effort. I understand that that might sometimes feel like different voices are juggling different informations. But the reality is that we've come to a point where we have something to present, to respond to the community after some time of dialogue, quite some time, about a year, like half a year. So the reason why I come to you today is because I really want you to consider a few factors. One, as council, you make the ultimate decision. Two, please support only businesses in Old Town, because that's what this money was for. There are other funds in development that can be used outside of the area. If the businesses are not located in Old Town, then although they might bring revenue, for example, helping people get on Google, you're really building a specific kind of business rather than supporting the businesses in Old Town, which is what this grant was specifically about. So we ask that you really look at the categories and spend a couple of minutes just exploring them and see how we can potentially support businesses more in Old Town so that they can create that Pride of Place. And there are many different ways in which the Hispanic Chamber, for example, we have our September 16th event, in which we can say, hey, you know what, the city of Galita allocated $10,000 from that money. Maybe we can move that over to something that creates a destination location for Old Town, for example, supporting the swap meets and create more funding around that project. And I know that's one of the projects that's also funded here, but we need to make Old Town that destination point for many reasons, and we thank you for this process.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Phoebe Manser. A reminder, for those of you on the Zoom webinar, please use a raised hand icon if you'd like to speak to this item.
Hello, my name is Phoebe Manser, owner of Copyright Printing and longtime advocate for Old Town Galita. For over a decade, I led Old Town's Economic Development Team, where our primary question is the same one that you're asking yourself today. How can we best serve the majority of our Old Town businesses? Our team tackled that question by identifying four core business sectors that represent the full spectrum of our local economy. With the support from a local advertising agency, we developed the proposal that you have in your packet that we call Old Town Rising: Igniting Business and Community, a Promotion and Publicity Program designed to energize Old Town's commercial and community landscape. The program includes industry-specific branding and themed events that reflect our local diversity and strengths, taste event, car show, health and wellness, and service sector. One of the greatest advantages of Old Town Rising is its ability to consolidate marketing efforts. A single unified publicity program allows us to better negotiate, better rates, and deeper discounts across radio, television, digital platform, and direct mail campaigns. It creates consistency in messaging and maximizes every dollar spent. Old Town Rising is also designed to complement and collaborate with existing events like community walk, arts showcases, Kellogg Square merchant events. It's in the area of marketing where these events often need the most support, and that's where this program steps in to provide real value. The advertising agency is ready to consult on a comprehensive year-long publicity strategy to support this effort. We believe that Old Town Rising offers a smart, unified path forward that lifts all our businesses while strengthening our sense of community. We look forward to working together to bring this vision to life. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mayor Protam.
Okay. Let's move to deliberations. Are there any, anyone have any particular comments? I can chatter on if that's no one else. So a couple of observations. First, and there was a variety of different things, and a number of them had events or promotions, like, what is it, the skate demo and the fitness that, that somewhat are maybe similar or, and so I guess, you know, sometimes it may make sense if some of these were coordinated, having them on the same day or something like that. Or maybe it's better to separate them. Maybe it's, you know, does it make sense, for instance, to have, to really build up so that the city could promote and so forth, that there's a number of events happening? And so it's, I think what would be helpful is, or consider, is to encourage the recipients to kind of meet together, you could, in the community center, something like that, just completely voluntary. It does, there's no requirement or anything like that, but just to talk about what they're doing and if there's a benefit in coordinating in some fashion or another, you know, just to see what, what fits with what they're doing. So that's the first suggestion, to, you know, set up some sort of meeting of the, of the businesses, the affected businesses, and have a conversation about how these funds would be spent. My second observation is to note that unlike a, a lot of the grants that we usually do, generally when we give out grants, they're to nonprofit organizations. This is unusual, what we're doing here. And so it's, they're, we're giving it to entities that don't have as much experience. You know, and we give it to nonprofits, they've gotten it for years and years and so forth. They know the, how it works. And this is all, this is new. This is a brand-new idea and a set of activities. So clearly, you know, some will succeed, some even good ideas won't succeed, that it's, people don't have the experience in, in doing it. And so I guess what I'd say is first that to, in part, we're looking at this and seeing what can be accomplished, but we're also going to think about some of this as a learning experience and to ask the recipient, the recipients, what do you think worked? You know, what things succeeded? What didn't succeed? What, what would you change? What lessons would you draw from it? Ask them to evaluate their experiences as a result of this. And, and then the, the next thought I had is that we do think of a year or two after this, and to, for, for both the recipients and for the committee members to step back and think, you know, what, what did succeed? What, what worked? What would we want to see? You know, particularly, are there some elements we would want to emphasize? You know, there are certain things for walkability or events that we thought were really good or the market, whatever it might be. How do we achieve those goals that you identified of bringing more visitors to Old Town? And, and particularly, the construction should be, hopefully, God willing, done by then and in the next year. And so in some ways, it's a welcome to Old Town kind of thing. I believe that there is, the, the committee has, especially when you throw in the JEM money, there isn't, there's a significant fund available. And, you know, I've already commented at various points about my lack of enthusiasm for the, you know, advertising campaign to promote the city as a technology hub and thereby raise rents. But I think, you know, when I think of priorities, the things that are really impactful to the businesses, impactful to the residents, impactful to the city, this program, which I really, I did appreciate very much the, what, the design that you came up with and the selection of such an interesting set of projects and so forth, and I think it's worth pursuing in a future year. So, yeah, thank you. I think it was great. Councilmember Karyak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. So I, I appreciated some of the, the comments from, from Jackie and the Hispanic Chamber. And, you know, it, it is true that it, it took some dialogue to, to get here. It also took our Economic Development Strategic Plan to get here, and it took a lot of hard work from community members, but also from staff to do this. So Shannon, I really want to thank you, and our city manager, I want to thank you. This was really a team effort, and at the end of the day, I, I mean, I think Mayor Protam Kazdin really hit it on the head. I mean, we're going to try and we're going to learn. This is a, a program where rather than going through a lot of third parties and having dollars being tied up in administrative costs, the money's going directly to the people that need it, and they will, they will spend it the way they know it needs to be spent. Will there be inefficiencies? I'm sure. Will there be opportunities for improvement? Sure. But we'll try and we'll learn together, and this is the beginning of a longer journey, not just kind of a one-off program. So I'm, I'm really happy that we were able to put this together, that we were able to make this work. You know, and I do feel like, you know, hope, hope is coming, you know, starting, you know, the next week, you'll be driving through Old Town over a brand-new bridge that wasn't there a year ago, that desperately needed to be replaced because it was going to be dangerous. And so you're going to start to see, you know, the things that are at the, at the end of the tunnel that are going to make Old Town a better place for all those legacy businesses, that's going to make it more of a destination, that's going to make it easier to shop, it's going to make it easier to live there, easier to, to recreate. A lot of good things are just around the corner. This program is in many ways a bridge of its own to that future, that future as a downtown, that future as a safer. that future as a safer, more walkable place for everybody, whether you're driving a car, riding a bike, or walking or pushing a stroller. It's, there's a lot of good coming. This is, this program is recognition that change can be hard, that change does require sacrifice, that change does require, you know, impacts. And so what do you do when you know there's impacts? You listen, you learn, you mitigate, you adjust, and you keep trying and you keep partnering. And so that's what I think we're doing here. And thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
I don't have much more to add. I just wanted to underscore part of what Ms. Kern mentioned, which is the commitment that the city has to support the applicants through this process. And one of the things we talked about in the committee is that, you know, with all these ideas, some of them have touchpoints with the city, whether it's with permitting or with understanding of process, and we certainly don't want to be the bottleneck to seeing these come to life. So we really stressed that in the committee meeting, and Ms. Kern mentioned it as well, that we want to work with them, especially if they're doing something for the first time, or they don't have as much familiarity with these processes, to help walk them through that, to provide technical support and make sure that, you know, these happen. One of the other things that we talked about is, in committee, is things can change. And so we have, you know, built in like that kind of ongoing dialogue with these applicants should something change in what they're planning to do, that we're, you know, kind of open to talking through that. And I agree with Mayor Protam Kazin that this, in many ways, feels like kind of this first phase of this, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how it goes, and I definitely want to hear feedback on, from the applicants, on what the process has been like, any of their suggestions, and hope that some of the applicants that aren't being recommended for funding come back, or maybe proceed with their project anyway, if they find another opportunity to do that. So I'm really glad to see this on our agenda tonight. It's been a long time coming, and thank you for all the comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I want to thank the committee and the staff and applicants and everybody involved in this process for their hard work. I know funding decisions are always so challenging and difficult, and it did stand out to me to look at sort of the amount of requests, you know, relative to the budget. It is challenging, and so, you know, hopefully, the dialogue around, you know, how we can continue to support Old Town will continue. And I think anybody who runs a small, running a small business is probably the hardest thing you'll ever do. It's very challenging, and even as a person who works for a nonprofit business, the needs are different, but I know firsthand that it can be very challenging. And so it's, I'm really glad to see this proceed forward, and I also hope that the city, in addition to its efforts that the city's already undertaking, you know, just continues to do things like advertising. I know I always like beat the drum on this, but advertising the city parking lots that are available in Old Town. I tell everybody I know about them, because there's still people who don't know, that we have free city lots, particularly if you're not comfortable with the backend parking, there are other lots available, or even, you know, MTD and other options to get into Old Town, and just other ways that we can support the process moving forward. So I support the recommendations.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiriyako.
Just one or two more quick things, I'm sorry. In keeping with the theme of this is a beginning, not the end of something, not all these requests are the same, and I'm really kind of talking to staff more a little bit right now. There are initiatives here that require possibly a special event permit or other types of permit or technical assistance, and so I'm just really hopeful that as these businesses that are receiving this support start trying to move forward with their initiatives, that our team is available and able to meet with them to make sure that whatever barriers or obstacles they're running into, they're able to get support so that they have the best possible chance to be successful and to be effective. So to the extent that we can just be available and step in, I think that would be really important, and a number of those businesses may need that support in Spanish, so having Marcos or someone else available who can help with that would be great. And then the last thing I'll say is, you know, there's parts of this town that during the summer, there's a free public concert just about every week. Old Town is now, for the second year in a row, going to have a summer concert series. You'll have block parties once a month for three months, so you'll have a free concert, and that's great. Here's an example of some of the city putting some good money behind good money. We fixed up the community center. It took a lot of money. The community center has now reopened. We heard earlier from seniors who are able to enjoy it. There's people out there playing pickleball. There's lots of other good things happening at the community center, lots of great activities, ping pong and other things. This is now another opportunity to take that space and leverage that space and leverage that community investment. And it's not angled parking for those of you who don't want to park angled. There's plenty of, plenty of regular parking at the community center in the front and the behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, give me one second.
Too late.
Oh. I'll move that we approve the Old Town Pride of Place Grant Program Funding Recommendations of the Economic Development and Revitalization Committee and authorize the budget appropriation totaling $120,000 for revenue and expense accounts as identified in the Fiscal Impact section of the report.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmembers, please do lock in your votes. Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Park Kazin.
Aye.
Three ayes and a yes.
Right. Okay. You want to take five minutes? Okay. Five-minute break.
Oh, Isaac's eating salad. Isaac! I can go get him, but... Go ahead, when you're ready. When you're ready. Okay. Okay, welcome back. And so next we have our Capital Improvement Program Budget Workshop for the 2025 and 2026 and 2026-2027 fiscal years. And leading us is, I guess, Mr. Rio from our Budget Office is taking it, and Ms. Buena is for the Public Works Department, probably jumping in. Anyway.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, Council members, community members. I'm Luke Rio, your Finance Director, and here with us tonight is Nina Buena, our Public Works Director, also joined with other staff. At the table here, we have Autumn Glazer, our Assistant Public Works Director, Joanne Plummer, Neighborhood Services Director, Matt Ford, General Services Director, and then Jaime Valdez, our Assistant City Manager. There's also key members of staff from each department and also online as well. So I'll be kicking things off tonight, leading most of the discussion, and we are here to present on the preliminary Capital Improvement Program budget for this upcoming two-year budget cycle. And just wanted to note and comment that preparing this budget was a citywide team effort, and so I just want to thank them and all their staff for their hard work in putting this together. And just wanted to remind City Council and the public that this is a preliminary budget, the numbers are subject to change, and along with the project priorities, just depending on City Council input. So with that said, we're going to just go ahead and jump right into it. So starting here first, this slide provides a very high-level overview of the Capital Improvement Program and the documents that make up the CIP that is provided, and the staff report and also the attachments. Just wanted to note, we have been undertaking key improvements to the CIP and its related documents. It's been reorganized to create a standalone, easy-to-navigate document, and will continue to be updated as we go through the process. Some of the major updates include an updated introductory section, narratives providing comprehensive explanations, definitions, and an overview of the city's prioritization framework, including the criteria and process that was discussed with City Council on February 18th, 2025. There's been a revised five-year CIP project list that's limited to only the active priority infrastructure projects and major planning documents. And along with that, the updated five-year CIP project budget that's aligned with that project list, this only includes the active projects and the corresponding budget projections. So this is a lot different than what you've seen in the previous years, where we used to include all the projects, and then we would have this comprehensive list. And then what's also included in part of the packet here is an updated five-year CIP project budget that was just discussed. Let's see, we are removing detailed project sheets for projects that are not considered active, and they're going to be placed in this newly-created long-term CIP project list. Now, this creation of this long-term CIP project list is capturing future conceptual projects identified in source documents such as master plan documents and/or City Council's recommendations to be included as a long-term CIP. And those also, and also those projects that are being recommended to be transferred to the long-term CIP, which was previously in the five-year CIP. And additionally, projects have been identified for deletion or transfer or maintenance, and we'll have a slide on that. And then additional details can be reviewed further in the summary of proposed changes in the five-year CIP section of the staff report, but we'll also cover that briefly in tonight's presentation. And again, as a reminder, you know, this document will continue to be further refined and changes during the budget process, and then also the numbers will be updated when new information is known about the projects. So at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over now to our Public Works Director Nina Buena, who is going to give a recap on some of the major capital projects.
The City of Galita has recently completed six CIP projects, as you can see listed in the slide. The pictures show Elwood Mesa Emergency Access Repair Project, which is right off of Santa Barbara Shores, and the Newport Drive Culvert Repair Project. CIP projects for '25-'26, there are seven projects that are scheduled for going out to bid or construction. Currently, three of those projects are currently out to bid, and we're scheduled to open bid for one of the projects May 12th and then May 29th. Here's a list of '25-'26 CIP projects that are on final design. We have 10 projects. I'll talk about the three that we're working on right now. Cathedral Oaks curb wall, which is in final design, Elwood Beach Drive Drainage Project Repair, and the Pickleball Entry Waiting Area at GCC. And these are projects in conceptual design for '25-'26. We have the Vision Zero Action Plan, and we're also working on the 2026 Annual Payment Rehabilitation and Concrete Improvement Projects.
Okay, but thank you, Nina. So the next few slides here, I'm going to be going over the major proposed changes to the CIP that we're actually seeking City Council feedback on, including consensus on what's being recommended to move or transfer to either the long-term CIP, but also for deletion or transfer to maintenance. So actually, I'm going to pull up an Excel workbook here, and I just wanted to highlight, just kind of show what's in the table and what was previously in the five-year CIP that's being recommended for reclassification to the long-term CIP. And so these changes, like was previously mentioned, is we're recommending that these projects now be reflected in that long-term CIP. I did want to highlight, there is one project that we are recommending to be actually transferred back into the five-year, just in previous discussions with our Neighborhood Services Director, and that's related to Santa Barbara Shores Park Improvements. That's related to playground replacement that we have park development impact fees programmed towards, and so that will be reflected in the final. And so I don't know if there's any comments from City Council or...
I have some comments, if others don't right now. So when I looked at this, it struck me that some of these are, there almost should be a new category, a separate category, and that's where those set of projects are going to, that are going to be impacted by forthcoming development. The development that's coming with all of the new housing and so forth. So, you know, for instance, Hollister Complete Streets, the, you know, the Hollister Safety One, Cathedral Oaks Class One, I think is one of the things that the Glen Annie has identified as something that they might fund. Stork Road Corridor Study, you know, it's hard for me to conceive, especially with Glen Annie, that that wouldn't be a street that they would have to consider as for their impact fees. And so, you know, I mean, much of the task that you have here is finding funding for projects, even good projects. It isn't necessarily, I gather, in some cases, a sense that projects are in the long term and necessarily bad projects, but there's no way to fund them. And I think there is that subset in there that are projects that we will be funding or that will be funded either through our impact fees or through the county's impact fees, and so we just want to note in some ways that these aren't just going into deep storage, if you will. You look, did you want to comment?
Mayor Protam Kazdin, we have a category for DIF-funded projects. Would that be sufficient?
Maybe. I mean, some of these are ones where I think it'll emerge as a consequence of the study that you're doing this summer, and that you're identifying in that study a bunch of projects that are, that the future development is going to impact. And so I'm just saying that the, some of these aren't necessarily going into deep storage. That's, we might have a path to funding them. You know, maybe, we'll see what happens.
That's correct.
Okay. And the other thing, so another area is that some of these projects, another category, if you will, would be a set of projects where we don't necessarily, we don't anticipate, you know, we don't have the money in the general fund, for instance, but we would want, encourage staff to be attentive to grants. And God knows what the grant environment is going to be going forward. But I'm thinking in particular of Lake Los Cárneros, the master plan, the footbridge. These are ones where we really would love to see them funded, but, you know, there's, we are limited financially, but I would say that depending, you know, I'm not saying we have carte blanche necessarily if a grant comes up. We don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're obligated to go forward and so forth, but that there's some, some of these are ones where if we saw a grant, we would want to talk about it more. And just to put an asterisk or something like that, that it's not buried and gone forever, but we know that these are really good projects that we would want to see if the opportunity is, presents itself. And the third element, the third item I want to highlight is Fire Station 10, because it's not a project that we are putting into deep storage. It has a different pathway, and Assistant City Manager Valdez, you might want to talk about it, but you're in the midst of kind of discussing the process there.
Yeah, we're looking at different alternatives in terms of funding, possibly even looking at station design changes to accommodate a smaller footprint or a less expensive building, but we're not there yet where we can abandon the discussion that we don't have enough funding to get there as of today.
Well, and I would add and emphasize that our discussion is over the contents of the new Memorandum of Understanding, in which the question of who is paying for it, county fire ourselves, is a key and fundamental question, and I don't want to belabor the, you know, divert this conversation, but it's on its own pathway, is the main point. So it's different than the other ones, and by no means are we suggesting that this is being buried or forgotten or anything like that, that this has, we are taking care of this in some way. And I think those are the main points I wanted to make. So Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions on this. I also had a question about Fire Station 10. It seems like we are actively working on it, so my question was why, why we would move it to the long term instead of keeping it on a five-year?
I would make the distinction right now that the immediate five years, we don't have enough money as it stands to be able to go forward on it. We're working towards that to see if there's other ways to get forward in conjunction with County Fire Protection District, particularly looking at future projects that may have significant ability to contribute to the fire station. I think that's the determining factor here. If we had this fully funded or close to fully funded, I think it'd be a different story, but by no means, doesn't mean we're throwing it to the back burner.
Okay.
So it's not on the long-term list?
No, it's being recommended to move to the long term.
Yeah, change the classification on that. It's not something that we're pushing off into the future. Sorry to jump the queue.
No, 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 because I think we're wanting the same clarification. So staff is recommending that Fire Station 10 be reclassified to the long-term CIP.
Yeah, and it's not.
So you're saying it should stay on the five-year?
Yeah.
I think that's what I'm saying, too. I understand the funding piece completely, but I think part, one of the criteria, from what I can tell from the staff report, is whether or not staff is actively working on it. So I would rather the caveat in the five-year be that we're still, there's still, you know, questions about funding, but that we are still actively working on it?
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify, so when you see the term "design," I mean, I don't know, maybe I could say it's fully designed as it is of today, it's in plan check, it's, you know, the precursor to construction. So it's not designed in terms of other projects where we have three years of design and workshops and all that kind of thing. So it's definitely basically shovel-ready based on the designs and the approvals we've gotten from the Coastal Commission. So it's not in construction because we haven't issued construction.
Well, I had a separate question.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll try and control myself.
Well, maybe if I can just make one general comment. I mean, this is a workshop, and the point of this workshop is to have this discussion, and if council wants to move projects from the five-year list to the 30-year list, we can do that. If they want to move projects from the 30-year list to the five-year list, we can do that. And also, just recall, the council did ask for a list of projects that we would recommend to be eliminated. We'll get to that slide in a minute. And full discretion of the council, I do think one of the lenses, besides just the funding and whether or not it's being worked on, was also whether it can be completed in the five-year horizon. People can certainly debate whether that's a good criteria to use. It can be on the five-year list, and then it might take eight years to get done. But I think that was the lens, and so if the council would want to move any project up to the five-year list, that can certainly be done. But part of the exercise, based on the discussion from a year ago, was to kind of move in this direction, so we're happy to do whatever the council directs, project by project.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think another question that I have that's more of a broad question, for the projects that are on the long-term CIP, what kind of process either do we have or should we have, both as a council and as a community, to have a point where we revalidate that those are projects that we want to keep there or not? You know, I think we've had some projects that were probably really good ideas 20 years ago or 15 years ago, and maybe conditions have changed, or the community has changed, or priorities have changed, and it no longer is important or is a priority, or maybe some, just something else has happened. So is there a, I know that, of course, council can always delete things, but I'm also wondering, especially for projects that might be really big, do we have a process to like kind of vet that with the community, or do other cities have a process like that?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, we can do that through the priority process that Public Works is working on developing, and add a public stakeholders component, so where we can go out to the community and get their input and feedback on any of the projects.
That would be great. I really like the idea of a public stakeholders check, and I don't know what, like what, I'll leave it to staff maybe to think about, like when that's appropriate. Is it like every five years, every, I don't know what frequency, but I like the idea of having some kind of mechanism to go back out and kind of verify.
That's something Public Works can work on and propose a schedule to council.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Curriaga.
Thank you. Let's see here. Can you scroll up a little bit with the list? So I'll just cover a couple of these. The Hollister Avenue Complete Street Corridor Plan, arguably Phase 1 of that program is already complete and being implemented right now because we have the interim striping program. Once we get past Project Connect, I think that would be an appropriate time to start looking at revisiting whether or not it makes sense to implement the full-on Complete Street Corridor Plan, because that would lead to landscaping, adding trees, that would potentially widen, fix the curb issue on the north side of Hollister, extend the curb out a few feet, which would create opportunities for some old-town businesses to have outdoor dining. A lot of the things that people, that got people initially excited about, about the changes on Hollister, those things haven't happened yet because we focused on really testing the traffic, the traffic pattern, and in putting in the safety improvements first. So I support having that go to long-term CIP, but I think that's just naturally going to come back up in a couple of years anyway, as we get to the end of Project Connect. I support the 101 Overcrossing going to long-term, but I just, I kind of want to put a pin in that one because there's going to be, there's going to be a Measure A renewal at some point, and I don't want to be, as a city, in the position of trying to explain to voters when that was a named project, why we didn't do that project. So that can't stay on the long-term CIP for long, long-term, but I don't mind it being there for right now. A couple of these things to Mayor Protam's, Kazdin's point, I think some of these things will come back at us in different ways because they'll be project-driven. One of those potentially could be the Ward Drive Sidewalk Infill. One of the largest housing projects no one's talking about is the Orchard Project. It's about 1,200 units over at Ward and Hollister. That's a big project. It's going forward currently as Builders' Remedy at the county, and having a project like this catch their attention might be valuable from the standpoint of trying to mitigate some of their sequoia impacts, some of their environmental impacts. That could potentially be something that they might want to have something to do with because it helps them with vehicle miles traveled and other impacts. So I, while I support having that beyond the long term, I do want that kind of front of mind if we're having conversations with county public works and potentially with that developer. I know we're looking at doing a sphere of influence for the Georgie property. When we're talking to them about the sphere, that might be part of the conversation. And, you know, I guess I'll just make a distinction, just because something's going to the long-term CIP doesn't mean it's not important. It just means we don't think we could realistically finish it in the next five years. And when I think about the flashing beacons at Kyrial at Jenna, or if you, can you scroll back down a little bit more? I think you have the Lake Los Cárneros Master Plan on there, a public swimming pool, obviously Fire Station 10. You know, Fire Station 10, I do have a question about whether or not we should put that on the long term, and the reason for me on that one is because, I mean, we're in conversations with the county on a variety of, on a variety of fronts, and I just don't want the county to get the impression that that's not an important enough project to us, or that's not something we're really looking to do in the near term. It's something that needed to happen in the 60s and 70s, not in the 2025s. And so I think anything that we can do to kind of keep that in front of the county, fire district, and the supervisors is something that's critical. I think that would be important to keep, keep front. I appreciate where staff is coming from. We asked you a question, you gave us an answer, and I think that, I think there's really good staff work here. I just think Fire Station 10 is unique. That's it for me.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I just, I noticed some of the items further up on the list had an asterisk, and so I wasn't sure what that signified.
Yeah, good, good observation. I believe that was related to being a previously GTIP project. So I just want to reemphasize that we have to maintain this list for the DIF, for the development impact fees. And so this, there are opportunities to move future long-term CIP back to the five-year when the opportunity does present itself.
Got it, okay. And then, that's helpful. And then I wanted some clarification on 9110, which is the bike path lighting, because this says construction.
Councilmember Smith, that project was a priority project based on a grant we had received from Measure A. We were, we put it out to bid, and we received no bids. We tried to negotiate with electrical contractors, and we could not get anybody to bid on the project. And the grant was past the deadline, so we, so the money went back to Measure A, and that project is currently, we've moved to the long term as it's unfunded.
Thank you for that background.
Thanks.
I also just wanted to flag, oh yeah, 9125, the flashing beacons. So I know a lot of community members have expressed concern about, you know, speed and issues along the Kyrial corridor, all the way, you know, all the way from, frankly, all the way from Stork, all the way to Winchester, and that whole stretch. There are stretches that are really dark, there's a stretch where we had a cyclist's I can say from experience that people may not be complying with new speed limits, and just lots of different issues, and we also have one of our parks. So, so just, that one just stood out, and looking at, and I know there's so many different projects, but, you know, number one, I mean, I don't know if there's anything in terms of any other safety, something that's like reduced in scope, that would still promote safety there, or, I don't know, but that one did stood out, if we could consider moving that back to the five-year list. I don't know if other council members have thoughts.
It was one of the ones I mentioned earlier, and I'm happy to support that. We've worked so hard to make that park more attractive and better serve that neighborhood, and it does, it's hard to simultaneously do that and then say, but we're going to kind of hold off on safety.
I just wanted a clarification on the, on another, the overpass, the 101 Overpass, it's listed, you know, with a price tag and on the budget summary table. Overpass, it's listed, you know, with a price tag and on the budget summary table. And, but it's, but it's being shifted into long-term, or what is the, the schedule then for that one? It's not completely clear to me if that's five years hence it would be studied, or what, what's the plan?
Mayor Protam, Kasdan, we moved the project itself to the long-term, but we're going to develop a study, so a minor project essentially, so we can study the overcrossing in the five-year.
Okay, so within the five-year plan is the analysis of it, and then we'll reasonably evaluate our options and so forth. Okay, that's, that helps. And likewise, that's the same with the Hollister Pacific Oaks.
Yes.
Thank you. Thought you were trolling me when I saw that in the long-term. Yeah. I'm sorry. Any public comments?
If any member of the public wishes to speak to this item, please use raised hand icon, and I will call on you. I'm seeing none, Mayor Protam.
Okay, then we can move to deliberations. Does anyone have any particular?
I was about to say, we, there's, there's a lot more.
Oh, you're right. Good lord. Sorry. It was wishful thinking there, I think. Okay. Yeah, move on.
We have a little more to get through.
Mayor Protam, council, I was wondering if we can kind of get a, some clarification on exactly the project numbers you guys would like to see added back to the five-year CIP. I had 9125, 9025.
Yes, we heard Fire Station 10 and the flashing beacon project at Jenna and Kyrial moved both of those to the five-year CIP. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. And I, for me, I want to emphasize that it's not necessarily, that I think that we're coming up with whatever that is, but the outcome of funding it is going to be the process of the MOU, that that discussion with the county fire is the vehicle by which we're going to fund this thing. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next slide here. So this, this slide now just highlights the projects that are being recommended for deletion or transferred to maintenance. So there's two projects listed here that's being recommended for deletion, and then two projects related to parking lot improvements that's being recommended transferred to maintenance. And then Public Works can provide additional detail if you guys have any further questions on these projects.
Just as a clarification, the, let's say, the Orange Avenue, and that is the pavement is part of maintenance. That?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's covered. Thank you.
So I got to ask about it just because I was reading an old article from like, one of my, I think it was my first year on council where we were kind of collectively grumbling about the status of the parking lot when it was going to get repaved. And it's been five years, and I don't want to be critical, but realistically, how much longer before that, that parking lot can get repaved and be in good shape? I'm talking about Orange Avenue a lot.
Sorry. Councilmember Kasdan, we're looking at potentially doing this as a change order to Project Connect, so we're looking at the budget that we have.
That would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Oh, yes. I just didn't know if staff could comment. You know, I know there's been interest in the use of reclaimed water more broadly, so I just don't know if, if staff could speak to the reasons behind the recommendation for deletion of, of these two items.
Councilmember Smith, those projects are reliant upon Greta Water expanding their reclaimed water service for us to tap into. So at this time, that's not a possibility. It's not on their radar, or one of their top projects.
Okay. Okay. And I just wanted to comment too, that we plan, any projects that do get recommended for deletion or transfer, we do plan to track that. So if there's ever any conversation or question about previous projects that were once in the CIP, we will be able to maintain this list of when they were deleted or transferred. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So this slide really highlights the proposed new CIP projects for inclusion in the CIP. This table summarizes staff's recommendation, whether it's in the CIP document category, long-term or five-year CIP. And again, we're looking for council, city council feedback and direction if, if they would like to see these either moved to long-term or five-year CIP. So again, council may direct staff to propose all the new projects move to long-term CIP to allow greater focus on completing the existing five-year CIP, or may choose to refine and prioritize specific projects. That's like what's being recommended here. I do want to highlight that there, there's a couple of these projects that are circled here in orange. They were just to show that we made a change that's a little different in the staff report. For instance, TBD 05, the Hollister Safety Improvements, Stork to Pebble Beach Drive is identified as a five-year CIP with an estimated total project cost of $200,000. And then we also circled this other project down here, TBD 07, the Wingwall Culvert at Cathedral Oaks Road. And that's actually been identified as a, kind of that next must-do project. And so I just, you know, just wanted to emphasize that. And we do have staff here that can provide additional information if council would like.
Are you? Miss, a council member, oh no, Reyes Martin?
So I hate to be that kind of Debbie Downer here, but, so maybe first a question. When is the next time the council will review this information? Would it be in two years at the next two-year budget cycle, or is the intent to review these CIP projects every year? Like, as a whole? Like, when would be the next time we'd have this discussion?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, so we'll have a follow-up meeting to this, and then we would do this process annually?
Annually, okay. So we have a lot on the, the next five years. We have a lot that we are still trying to figure out how to fund, things that are in the middle of construction. I know that all of the projects on this list are really important. I would really urge council to, as much as possible, put things on the long-term so that staff can really focus on the things that are right in front of us right now, particularly when so many of these are not funded. I know that there might be reasons why, yes, we should keep it on the five-year. Five-year goes by really quick, goes by really quickly, five years. And part of, you know, at least what I have shared about this process is that the public sees that we have so many unfunded projects. And it's not about them not being good projects or projects that are important, but we do not have a feasible path to fund them. And I just think it, it doesn't serve us to not really try to be more disciplined about keeping things up front that are feasible, and we have a path to not just fund but complete. And things that are good ideas, you know, for now, I think, keep them on the long-term, but, and be just very judicious about what we move back in. And part of my whole push has been, what can we take away from the CIP list? And the list to add is much bigger than the list to delete. And that's not, that's not what I wanted, you know, as to, the place for us to be at. So I do want to pose that. I know it's not fun, and it's, it's hard, because I look at these, and there's a lot of these projects that I really want to see happen. It's not that anyone doesn't want to see them happen, but we don't have the funding. And I would like staff to focus and prioritize on the projects that they have in front of them for the next five years.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the, the Wingwall Culvert at Cathedral Oaks Road, because that, you know, that certainly seemed new to me, and also involved significant costs. So can you share a little bit of background on that project?
Yes, Councilmember Smith, the Wingwall Culvert at Cathedral Oaks Road is a existing culvert where one of the wing walls fell over in the storms of 2022. It was up in question at a point that the county had started working on it, which is why we did not pursue emergency funding. And eventually it was determined because it was a part of the culvert itself. It's actually city-owned, it's just on county property. And the project was handed over to us in late 2024. So it is a, a pretty significant risk to the roadway due to the wing wall being non-existent. The city then, at the end of the year, actually, I think the beginning of this year, we did do an emergency project to remove the debris, the broken wing wall out of the creek, and do some plastic sheeting to protect from erosion during storm events. And so this project is to get a design and understand what it will take to replace that ring, that wing wall. And I just want to add, Caltrans does our bridge inspections throughout the city and provides us inspection reports. And this was one item that was noted on those inspection reports. So those types of things may pop up from time to time as they do their inspection and determine that there's a risk. They'll rank, you know, where, what the risk is and what the recommendations are. So you may see these in the future, you know, from a Caltrans bridge inspection report.
So it's just unfortunate to hear that the, the county sort of put us in that, you know, difficult position, and that we missed that, that window for funding. So this strikes me, I guess I was just sort of trying to get a sense of, you know, we are, right, doing effectively, you know, an emergency project on the, on the crib wall. You know, does, does, in terms of the urgency of this item, is it, is it staff's take that, that this is from a, from a safety or regulatory perspective, a priority?
Councilmember Smith, as we've reviewed the project, I think it could compromise the bridge. But once we do the preliminary design, we'll have a better idea of where we are and how much time we have. So I recommend that we at least do the preliminary design to see where we end up.
I see. So that, that sort of process will inform the, the scope?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're good. Councilmember Smith, are you pondering, or are you?
Yeah, I am pondering. I'm reflecting on Councilmember Reyes Martin and her comments. In light of her comments, I wanted to make sure I understood, we had received in the staff report, you know, budgetary information about what is currently unfunded in the five-year project. And it was a little unclear to me whether or not that unfunded amount, and I'm sorry to, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, maybe we'll get to that, but I wasn't sure if the total unfunded included these proposed new projects, or if the total unfunded is, is about, is propos, without these ones.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith, I can answer that. So the, that summary table on the estimated unfunded amount, it includes the proposed new CIP projects marked with five-year CIP, except for the Hollister Safety Improvements, the $200,000 is not factored in that number.
And then, and then also to follow up on that, I guess, I guess this is a broader question of what is, the question came to my mind in terms of looking at what is in, let's say, the potential five-year window, right? Some, some things, like, we're already have contracts, or we've executed, and it's coming up next year. But I don't know if staff sees as feasible for any of these ones that are within range. I'm, I'm wondering, like, is there any way to adjust the scope of a proposed project? I mean, where there are certain safety things, maybe not, but I'm just sort of wondering as, as we're looking at these things and trying to reduce, if there could be a larger look at reason, is there any reasonable way to sort of reduce the scope of some of these items, or is it just their inherent nature? What's being proposed is already a limited scope?
Councilmember Smith, I think the projects that are closer to final design are as reduced as we can go. But the projects where we may have some leeway are the projects in preliminary design are not started yet. And once we investigate and do the preliminary design, that will really inform our decisions on cost and scope.
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's, it's tricky. I guess I would just put out there that I'm certainly, I guess, open to that kind of analysis. But of course, I'm not, I'm not the Public Works or Parks or building expert, so I, of course, I don't have a good sense of what's realistic there. I would certainly be open to staff's input on that in terms of, of trying to get us to a place where, where we have a more funded projection.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Karyalka?
Thank you. I think generally speaking, I can support just about all these going into long-term. And I appreciate some of the comments that were made earlier about having to try to start holding the line. Hollister Safety Improvements for $200,000 versus what we stand to gain there, I could probably support keeping that or putting that in the five-year CIP. I see a line through long-term with highlighted five-year CIP, so maybe that's where we are going anyway, and I just missed it. The one that, the one that's giving me some heartburn is the Hollister Avenue Crosswalk and the ADA parking improvements. And there's a couple of reasons. One is, except for some private parking lots, or most of our private parking lots, we don't have a lot of ADA parking in this, in the city. We certainly don't have it as street parking. And that was one of the things, along with the crosswalk at Magnolia, that I think was originally in the Complete Streets Plan. And then it's just, I think, and as we kind of went through different iterations of it, I think we kind of moved away from that. And then the other thing is just, you know, the Hollister at Magnolia has been where we've had, over the, the history of our city, a few of our fatalities, you know, more than one fatality for pedestrian or bike there. So I am struggling with putting that into long-term. So I guess I'll kind of wait to hear from some of my colleagues and see where they are on that one. But I see, I see that one as a good opportunity, and also potentially a good, a good candidate for grant funding. But maybe that's something that could go in the long-term and then emerge if we see an opportunity that's aligned. So I'll just, I'll just kind of leave it there. I'm, I'm trying to hold the line. I appreciate the comment earlier. I'm trying not to add too much new as we're taking out.
Do you want to go first?
No, I can, I can wait barely.
I'll, I'll just reiterate. I think my, my preference would be, I'm persuaded about the, the Wingwall Culvert and the Hollister Safety Improvements, to keep that on the five-year, and then think the remainder to move to long-term and reevaluate next year. I, I will say, I think with the, the crosswalk at Magnolia, I'm, I guess where I'm hesitant to put it just now on the five-year is, I'm, I'm wondering what impact it has. We haven't made a, a long-term determination about the striping. It's an interim project. So I'm kind of thinking about the timing of, of whenever that, there's a final decision on that versus then doing this crosswalk. I guess I think, I, I would like I guess I think I, I would like to reevaluate that next year along with the rest of these. But that would be my preference. I think it's hard to not want to do everything right now. But we also have a really large pavement unfunded gap that we're also trying to do. So it's trying to manage all of that at once. So that would be my preference.
So my question, so when we've done planning and their work list, it is where they show us, here's the things that we can accommodate with our existing funding. And then if we have additional money, here are the other ones, and we rank them. And I guess I'm wondering how much of these things that we're talking about, after you had identified, here's the big six, and I guess it's now a big seven, that after we accommodate those, where we have mandates, and there was the other three, I think also, where you have, in essence, some kind of either grant deadline or regulatory deadline or something like that. If we recognize or we accept that we, those are, that there's a, a ranking process, a priority process, and that those we have to get done first, are we actually doing these? I mean, is this right now, is our discussion right now sort of, I don't know? What can we get done after we do the ones that we are mandated or otherwise obligated to do?
Hi, Mayor Protem Kazin. I think that the goal is what we put in that five-year is that what we're able to start. And we, like we said, you may not be able to finish it in the five-year, but it's rolling. So next year we'll come back with a new five-year and then another five-year. I think in the next two to three years, we're pretty booked up with the current, the, the big projects, the ones that are grant-funded. You know, we'll see what the bids come in at to see where we are economically as well. And that will also play into our future, what we can do.
So realistically, because this happens, let's say, with planning every year, where we go through a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion on the extra, and I think in Neighborhood Services, it's the same. But here's, you know, all the discussion about all the things we would do after we take care of the projects we have to do. And for the most part, they never do it. They've run out of capacity. They've run out of money. And so we're just, you know, moving it up and down, recognizing it's for our own kind of entertainment. So if we are effectively talking right now about that, for the next two to three years, essentially, you guys are all booked up, we probably don't have to spend too much time on the post-three-year discussion. And maybe the thing to do is, you know, I guess I love categorizing and, you know, is to kind of, that we have a ranking. These are the things we have to do and that that's what's going to be. And these fall outside of that. And in essence, we, we don't have to rank them now about which one we do first or which one we do second, but that can come down the road, particularly after the, the ranking process or ranking factors are completed. But I think, you know, we should put it in context and recognize that we are going to de facto be targeting our resources to the highest priority projects and not fruitering it away on an array of different things that are less essential or anything like that.
Mayor Protem Kazin and members of the council, I wanted to point out, in addition to what our Public Works team said about us maybe not finishing a project within five years, but it's open and we're, we're working on it and it's evolving. The same would hold true for one of the proposed items that we have, which is the redevelopment of Nectarine Park. There is a grant that we had applied for during Phase One, knowing we wouldn't be successful in that because we needed to have a conceptual design in order to be eligible for funding. But we applied because in order to apply for Round Two, you had to have applied for Round One. So if it's not a project that we at least get to the conceptual design on, then we could be not eligible to apply for funding in the future. So even if we're not able to take some of these projects to full completion, as Ms. Wellner had indicated earlier, just getting those few first steps into some of these projects allows us to either determine if they can remain in the five-year or go to the, the long-term, or make them eligible for other funding opportunities. So I just wanted to point out that fact as you're making your final decisions.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. This is, this is my first round in, in really looking at, at this, at these projects as a council member. I, I was wanting to know a little more background on the, the Mission Leasing. I don't think I was on council when that was acquired and I just, just to get some background on.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith, the Mission Leasing Property and the business condos that are located to the south of that old dealership, that was acquired by the city in 2021 as a right-of-way acquisition associated with Project Connect. For a while, we had tenants in the business condos. The, the vehicle leasing property has always been vacant since that time. We created this capital project sheet just to recognize that there's a cost associated with that acquisition. That's simply, it's, it's just a, it's another liability out there that depending on the city's ultimate disposition of that property, if we choose to keep it, we need to put some funding into maintaining it. There hasn't been a deliberative process to, you know, to decide what will ultimately be done with that property. So, and, and right now, it's, it's being used by the Project Connect contractor as part of their yard. So it's really out of commission until Project Connect concludes. And then no decisions have been made on, on its ultimate use.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, I was just going to add, historically, I worked on part of the acquisition of that property. And at the time, the council had stated that it could look at it for a number of different things. One would be to immediately sell it after the construction project is done. Two, to maybe use it as a different type of city facility. Or three, potentially look at it for either some sort of housing project or some sort of public benefit that could help, you know, serve some of, some of the goals of the council. But again, those are all conceptual in nature. So I think those are kind of still the three that remain, I wouldn't say necessarily have to be, but are likely to be one or, one of those outcomes.
Great, that's helpful. And, and do we carry, so it sounds like in terms of, the question also crossed my mind, sort of if there's much risk in terms of, you know, putting, putting this on a long-term plan. But it sounds like, you know, it's tied, it's tied up through the construction anyways. And so in terms of, I don't know, right? I mean, I guess there's always risk that things, you know, deteriorate over time. But, but if it's, if it's tied up for a few more years, then I think it, it makes sense to put on the long-term. And then, thank you. I do want to flag, there's been a lot of discussion about the concept of the 101 overcrossing. And, you know, the, I think the big dream or, or concept years ago was a row, you know, a vehicle overcrossing that was never funded. And so, you know, a reduced scope of a, of a bike pedestrian overcrossing has been floated as a possibility. It still raises various, you know, feasibility questions. I, I, and, you know, I see that, that the proposal here is sort of for that, you know, the concept of just even doing the analysis related to, if, if the scope is reduced to bike, ped, yeah, what, what are the options? What makes sense? What doesn't? So I, that, that, that one, it's, it's just, I know it remains, particularly in terms of access to Dos Pueblos High School. It's serving our entire community. And, and again, I don't know, I am not a design expert, but even the, even the current, I don't know if there's ways, if even the current overcrossing could be improved in other ways to make it safer for students crossing over. But it's, it just, it just remains a real concern, I guess particularly for any, for anybody crossing, but particularly as it relates to students getting to the high school. And we know our pop, our, in terms of our, our zoning, you know, we've made a lot of changes to zoning south of 101 that could potentially increase those crossings over time. So I, I would prefer to see that one on the five-year CIP. It just, it remains a strong concern.
I would just, so I guess, so right now it is, the conceptual study is on the five-year plan. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the thing is, what, one thing that's, I wonder about is to go back to one of the things we started with, or I started with, that is, those set of projects that would be eligible or likely to, to receive money through the DIF and, and future fees. I would think we're in a better position to collect the money if we have a conceptual plan completed. Is that, so in other words, for this project, for instance, if we have a, a plan, we could, we're better positioned to be able to get their money for, let's say, any, some of the projects that come up?
Mayor Protem Kazin, as far as the DIP goes, that will be determined when we do our DIP update in the Nexus Study. But it certainly is good to have projects at conceptual design to go after grants. So we have a two-pronged approach potentially.
Okay. Well, I would just, there's a certain urgency, especially with this one, because my son is now 15 and he'll be driving in a year. And, you know, so I want you to, it's a terrifying thought. Okay. Thank you.
Council members, Mayor Protem Kazin, council members, can we, can we get some feedback or confirmation on, are you, is council okay with how the categories are presented here? Or were there specific ones we wanted to move to the, to the, to long-term?
And I can try to, I can summarize what I heard. I don't know if it was the consensus of all four, but I'll start. What I think I heard is the only two projects to move to long-term would be the City Hall Elevator and the Pickleball Court resurfacing, I believe. And again, that was not necessarily a consensus of all four, but I was picking and choosing comments that I heard from individuals.
You mean apart from the ones that are already identified, for instance, as long-term? With the, especially with the caveat, the recognition that for the next three years or so, the priority is going to be on those projects where we have some sort of regulatory grant-based or other kind of obligation. So in essence, even those that are on the five-year plan, we're not turning for the most part, except for small ones where you have extra money or something like that. But that, it's, you know, we have certain things we're required to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and just to underscore that point again, Councilmember Kazin, because you made it earlier as well, when we were looking at the 30-year list, that it doesn't necessarily mean that if a grant opportunity come up, came up, that we would not look at that list and see if there was an opportunity. So just underscoring that point, I'll underscore that point on the Mission Leasing renovation. These conversations unfortunately never went anywhere. But when the third round of home key funds came out, we did initiate light conversations with the county to see if there was any interest in potentially doing a deal where potentially they would apply for home key funds and the site could be purchased. And as Mr. Valdez mentioned, the, one of the three options is housing. Those conversations never progressed. It's complicated. The grant came and went. But regardless of what list it's on, we're looking for those opportunities when there's potentially outside money available.
Thank you then.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. So this is where we actually were, we were going to stop on questions, but we'll go ahead and move forward here. So we're going to be diving into the CIP budget. So as a reminder, the preliminary CIP budget does reflect updated estimated amounts. So if you do compare to last year, you'll see that a lot of the numbers have changed. Changes will continue to be made after the workshop, including incorporation of city council input. And just as a reminder, construction building cost inflation resulted in new funding gaps and projects, again, was, once funded, now have an unfunded amount. Majority of our CIPs are funded through non-general fund sources, so that includes our special revenue funds and our development impact fees, and also many local, state, and federal grants. This just recaps the same information that was shared earlier, just about what's in the packet, all the details on each of the projects. And again, it focuses only on the five-year CIP, not on the long-term CIP, but there is a, a list that's provided in those attachments. So this next slide, I wanted to provide city council an update on the California Construction Cost Index. This has been updated to reflect the January 2025 numbers, and it's showing how it's currently trending. So again, this chart or this information, this index is produced by the California Department of General Services. It shows the January to January change over the years. If you, over the past 10 years, it's up 62%. When you look at it from, since 2019, it's up 48%. And then if you compare it to last year, it's up 2%. So that kind of shows signs that it is stabilizing. Again, drivers of increased construction costs, it's a variety of factors, including increased labor costs, material costs increases, any types of impacts to the supply chain, regulatory costs, increased demand. This will remain an ongoing challenge for our city budget. So that's why when we get to another slide, we'll be focusing on some of the, what we call, what we are calling the Big Six projects, just to ensure those get fully funded. So this slide summarizes the five-year CIP and the total project cost, the cost to complete, the funded amount and the estimated unfunded amount. And it's organized by the departments and then the number of priority projects. So again, this will be updated just based on the feedback we heard from city council. But I do want to point out, if you include all the projects here that's in the five-year CIP budget, it's about an estimated unfunded amount of about 50.8 million. If you do look at last year's CIP unfunded amount, we have made significant progress when we did move a lot of these projects to the long-term CIP. Okay, so this following table identifies what we're calling the Big Six. And these are the six major priority projects that are currently in construction or will be entering the construction phase within probably the next two years. Currently, there's an estimated funding gap of approximately 7.7 million. And so while this 7.7 million will continue to be further refined, staff is recommending prioritizing funding allocation to these projects when that, that funding source does become available. Just given the level dollar amount, it is recommended to be funded through Pago, which is essentially cash or, you know, savings that we may have from various funding sources. For example, with the Galita Valley Library Building Safety and ADA Improvement Project has an estimated unfunded amount of 2 million. We are recommending that the general fund does support it, but also we're looking at library special funds and eligible DIF funds so they be available. And so we'll have more information on that when we get to the, when we move through the budget process. And then San Jose Creek Fish, Fish Passage Modification Project has an estimated unfunded amount of 5.7 million. There is a pending grant of 3.75 million. So that's not accounted for in that estimated unfunded amount, so that amount can go down. But again, this, this project is a requirement that we are required to do. It is recommended to be funded by Pago from our general fund or some type of interfund borrowing if necessary to complete this project. if necessary, to complete this project. And I'll pause here just to see if city council had any questions or comments.
Just a quick comment. By my calculations, we're 97% funded on the Big Six. So that's better than it could be.
Yeah.
And can you go back a slide to the one here? So the 50, so yes, 50, 50.8 million is a lot of money. Don't, don't want to even act like it isn't. But compared to the total project cost of 297, I mean, we're about 83% funded on those. That, that is a big improvement. That's a lot better than we were at a year ago. So, good work.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I had a question. My understanding is that we, we, for the San Jose Creek, the 9006, that we have a, a federal grant that's contributing to that in part. So is it correct, in my understanding, that should, knock on wood, that'll all go through? But should that fall through, what would be the option for, for funding that project?
Councilmember Smith, good question. So when we did issue the bonds, we assumed not receiving that grant. That was part of the strategy, was to, you know, issue enough bonds to ensure that we have enough funds, bond proceeds that can possibly cover the total project cost in the event that the grant does not become available. Should that, you know, grant become available, there is a possibility that there could be less bond proceeds spent. And then that's where we would actually have this kind of funding strategy and recommend what we call revenue swaps with other projects, and that we can free up money then to apply to other projects that need funding. But what we hope to, we actually have a slide actually on major pending grants. And we can talk about that specific one there as well.
Okay. And it sounds like, I was trying to wrap my head around, for that project, is it far enough along? I mean, obviously, we're pretty far along. If, if there was funding, if there was grant funding lost, would there be potential to adjust the scope of that project? Or with where we're at in terms of grants and fundings and promises, would this, would the strategy be more, no, we would backfill with the available bond, bond funding and make other adjustments from there?
Councilmember Smith, I'll, I'll answer that one. So there's a couple grants at play with the San Jose Creek. We have an ATP Advanced Transportation Grant that's driving the schedule. And that one has an award date of September of this year. So we have to be under contract. That, that's an 18 million grant, 18 million dollar grant. The bond proceeds was issued to make up the, the unfunded portion. And then on the side, because we're always continuing to search for money, we did apply for the Reconnecting Communities of 11 million. I just want to add, though, with that reconnecting communities, so they have now postponed the, the webinar for the information session. So as we get closer to the award date of September, we start risking, even if that money does come through, we will be under contract before we have an award. So that could risk some of the funding. Because if you start spending the money or award prior to being under the grant award, you would risk, it's not eligible for reimbursement. So that's just one key scheduling. We're going to keep pushing for the ATP funding because that is a, that is, we're under contract. That is a grant that we, we do have, and it's known. And then I think, did that answer your question?
Maybe. So...
Oh, the scoping, sorry. I knew there was another piece. And so that ATP grant is the entire project. There are no pieces we can take out or, or shrink down without risking that funding.
Got it, thank you.
I was curious about the, the crib wall here. Does that incorporate the other element that you added or highlighted as part of additional projects that are being added? So in other words, is it a Big Six or is it a Big Seven?
Mayor Protim Kazin, currently, we're using bond funds for the crib wall, so it is fully funded.
So in other words, the one that we, we just talked about, that Councilmember Smith highlighted, for instance, which was the wing wall, Wing Wall Culvert. That is, and that was identified as one that we sort of had to do. Is that separate from the crib wall?
It is separate. It's a culvert bridge located near Glenany.
So in essence, we have a Big Seven, not a Big Six. And that, that also has an obligatory quality to it, that it's pushed its way up the queue?
Potentially. As we go through the preliminary design and conceptual design, we'll have a better, better idea and see how much time we can buy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next slide. So this next slide is a table that summarizes the major pending grants and other funding sources staff are currently either working on or pursuing. So we just heard about, talked about that Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program Grant of the 11.16 is pending that grant agreement. We didn't identify here, there was a Vision Zero Plan, Safe Streets for Roads and Roads for All Grant Program that was awarded. There is an Urban Forestry Projects Grant. This is actually in the operation budget, but is a million-dollar grant that it's at risk of being defunded. The San Jose Creek Channel Fish Passage Modification Project does have a application that was submitted for 3.75 million. We should know the results by June. And then there's, city council will hear more about this grant on May 20th. It's a 3.6 million dollar grant related to South La Patera sidewalk and bike lane improvements, and then Hollister Ave Crosswalk at Magnolia Ave and ADA parking improvements through the Safe Streets for, and Roads for All Implementation Grant. And then there's also various grants, I believe, that staff is, was still working on to submit as an appropriation request to Congressman Carver Hall's office, and just working on identifying which projects to submit funding for. And so again, this, this is just a draft list, you know, it continues to be refined. And staff will continue to apply for grants for those unfunded projects in the five-year CIP. And again, if there are grants out there that may, you know, be available for the long-term, that certainly can be brought back to council and council can make the decision if they want to move that long-term CIP to the five-year at that time. Okay, so the next few slides, I'm kind of going to go through these quickly, but these are just, again, a high-level recap by department of what's currently in the five-year CIP. It identifies, you know, the total project cost, total unfunded amounts, current funding sources, and then notes and funding strategies. A lot of these, we did, if you recall, had unfunded amounts, but we did get them funded just kind of through the creative strategy that we went through over the course of this last year. And then also just, you know, again, it reflects updated costs. So some of these you guys already, we've already reviewed, but I'm going to kind of go through these. And then feel free to stop me if you guys have any further questions. So again, this is with Public Works. It doesn't include the, you know, there was some of those last-minute projects. So again, this is what was in the packet. Again, this is a Public Works continuing on with the, the rest of their projects here. So again, total unfunded amounts are listed here. And, you know, we'll continue to, you know, revisit and look at funding strategies. But again, the budget is constrained. And so, you know, as we move forward, these may continue to get deferred, but at least they're in the five-year CIP and staff will have that ability to keep, continue working on them in, in terms of searching for funding sources. Okay, and then this next slide, again, is the, the end of the list of, with Public Works. And so again, we'll add those projects that was mentioned earlier to Public Works is five-year CIP. And then this next slide is moving on to Neighborhood Services. So this does summarize the list of their major projects in the five-year CIP. In this slide, you can just see that there's actually just a total unfunded amount on this list of 400,000 related to Matilda Park improvements. There's a comment on here that construction is estimated to begin September 2025. It's currently being rebid. And it's concerning the use of park diff, so that total unfunded amount may come down just a little bit. And then this next slide is, again, is the rest of the five-year CIP projects.
So did we move Evergreen to long-term? Didn't we just?
So Evergreen Park Improvements, it's listed here in the five-year CIP.
Oh, I see, it's got diff, it's using the park diff, okay.
Oh, that's... Okay, moving on to the next slide, is General Services. And again, that same concept, these are the active priority five-year CIP projects and the estimated total unfunded amounts. There is a project that we wanted to highlight here and just kind of wanted to put this in front of council and just remind them that just like roads that we need to fund, we do have to also be responsible for our facilities. Now that we have direct ownership and management, we do need to start setting aside additional funds to, just to ensure that these facilities are maintained. And, you know, it, it was previously discussed and we're still working on it, just developing this ongoing funding policy that will first be discussed with the Finance Committee and then brought back to city council. But just to ensure that we have enough funding, should there be an emergency repair or replacement maintenance that needs to be done on the many, pretty much all the facilities that the City of Galita owns.
So at least for me, to the extent that you guys have a ranking of this and you, you consider this, like, at the top of the list, you can, for future reference, you know, put it up there like that or something like that.
And then moving on, these next few slides, again, this is just a recap of what was identified. It's only summarizing all the unfunded projects from the five-year CIP. And again, we're going to continue to make work efforts on funding strategies. And we'll have actually a few slides on that of, of what we've done so far and then what, you know, other suggestions and seeking council feedback if you want us to pursue other, other types of funding strategies or budget strategies in terms of addressing these unfunded amounts. So I'm going to actually go through this. So again, you saw the, the summary of it earlier. This is just kind of going into more detail. So it's, it's there for council and the public. So Funding Plan Updates, so we do have a living document and it's an Excel model. We do update this. We originally developed it from the Long Range Financial Forecast that we did back in December 2020. As of right now, though, you recall that part of this, we, that's what got us to pursue the bonds, the lease revenue bonds and sales tax revenue bonds. Going forward right now, though, our main focus is on the Big Six Priority Projects and really just pursuing pay-as-you-go, utilizing one-time savings. We don't have the capacity for debt. So that's something that, why we're trying to refocus our efforts on specific projects. And then this slide just highlights some key considerations just to keep on, in mind about the ongoing risk and challenges that we face. Again, construction cost volatility and market conditions. You know, many of the projects have not gone out to bid yet. So when those final bid results and construction contract awards are received, they'll provide a clearer picture of actual project costs. So just want to be, you know, put that, put it out there that, don't be surprised if they do come in higher than what was expected. Grant matching and timing constraints. So again, securing timely matching funds for awarded grants remains challenging. Staff and consultant capacity, so that's, we do have current vacancies. And then there are also competing priorities that may impact the project delivery schedule. There's long-term infrastructure maintenance burdens that we're anticipating. So future operating and maintenance costs will increase as the new infrastructure is placed into service. There was some information we put in, inside the staff report that kind of highlighted potential ongoing maintenance costs. And, you know, we were looking at that number and it's, you know, what, what we're anticipating by fiscal year '27, '28, we estimate about a little, you know, a little bit more than a million. Possibly it could reach up to almost 2 million just for ongoing operational maintenance costs. And that's for, you know, for Project Connect, San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path, even the Train Depot, and then just various splash pad maintenance, just various projects that will require this consistent maintenance just to maintain that type of infrastructure.
Actually, you had highlighted, I can see your name up there. I'll catch you in a moment. But you had highlighted in the report some other, like the Olympics and some other things that were also going to have a big impact, whoever wrote it.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So that's part of our broader economic and supply chain risk, so that there will be general increases in construction costs that we're anticipating, just driven by supply chain inflation and then the regional impacts in the local market, right? With the combination of the massive fire events that happened in Los Angeles, which could shift labor and material availability, and then the upcoming 2020 Olympic Games, which can drive significant demand for construction labor.
And I would add probably immigration impacts, the, the drying up a lot of the labor market. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you. I had a, I guess I, I had a, I guess I had the same kind of scope question regarding some of the pending items related to the Elwood Mesa. And I, I guess, just raising the question because I know that, that some of the permitting and processes that happened were back in either 2018 or 2019. So again, I just sort of posed the question. I, I don't know if anything sort of within some of the, the Elwood Mesa purview, if there's opportunity in terms of looking at the, is there room for revision of scope or, or are we locked in?
Councilmember Smith, the Elwood Mesa project, Butterfly Monarch project is phased in, so there's multiple phases. The phase we were really focused on in the last year was the Coastal Conservancy Grant, which was 3.9 million. And we spent the, that portion. It expired at the end of February and we spent it down. But what comes with that is, is keeping the trees alive that were planted and the monitoring requirements that are permit, monitoring requirements. So there is still an ongoing operational piece to it. And there's a couple little ancillary projects, such as we had to install temporary water meters to, for irrigating the, I think we added to 3.1 miles of irrigation line. And so we need to move those into permanent water meters. But the rest of the Phase One project that was permitted is currently not planned to go to construction because it is unfunded. And we are still working with the Coastal Conservancy. You know, they're very interested in, in continuing to see work take place. So I do think that there's still opportunity there. But yes, we are trying to phase the pieces that we don't have funding for, knowing that there's a couple little pieces that we do need to move forward to maintain what we've installed.
Thank you for that. My next question relates to the, the splash pad. I understand we've had some challenges. And, and so it's not yet in existence, is my understanding. I just, I just put it out, I just don't, I just put it out there if we, if, if, if we should consider pausing on that item. But I, I know it's one that people have really been looking forward to. But I, I would also imagine that it involves a certain degree of sort of maintenance and upkeep and other costs liability moving forward. So I just posed the question.
Councilmember Smith, we have experienced some unprecedented challenges with this project. We are in communications with a citywide team to include the city manager's office, Public Works, our legal team, our building department to bring this project to fruition. So if there comes a time to where we believe that it's in the best interest of the city to officially pause, we will then bring that recommendation forward to council.
Thank you. I, I recognize that that's just not something that we want. But I just, seeing where we are with that... But I just, seeing where we are with that raises the question. And then just to make sure I'm clear and sort of understand on all things Evergreen Park. So I think there was a discussion last time about that within a certain period of time, we may go to bid on a master planning process. Is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, we are looking at, again, looking at the very beginning steps of potentially master planning Evergreen Park. There is aging infrastructure throughout the park. The parcel itself is, has a very small portion of the park that's developed. We have recreation amenities throughout other areas that are undeveloped in the open spaces. And we do have a creek in that area that requires restoration through our Creek and Watershed Management Plan. So it made the most sense between Neighborhood Services and Public Works for us to consider a master planning effort for that entire site. And that will be a lengthy process. So we're estimating that will be about a two-year process to do the public engagement, engaging all the right stakeholders with that park and everything that's associated to that park. So that's what we're looking at doing in the first steps. And then that will tell us whether or not where our improvements should be and what the priority of those improvements should be.
Great. So, so is that piece expected in the five-year window?
Yes, we are expecting to do that in the, in the five-year window.
Thank you. And then I appreciated the inclusion both of the, there was the reference both to 2025 paving and then 2026. So I didn't. I know, I'm still learning, but as a reminder to myself, we've included paving in the maintenance budget. Is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, that's correct. We put it in the CIP because we have staff working on it in the CIP group.
Okay.
That was a good question.
Thank you. And then. And my recollection from our previous sort of budget discussions more broadly or project or department planning is, should we identify sort of other potential funding or opportunities for paving to increase that scope for the, for the city, I guess, city planning processes? Would that sort of still be seen in the maintenance budget? Or would that be seen as sort of a special CIP in terms of a one-time infusion of additional funds?
Councilmember Smith, we would still recommend it be in the maintenance budget and we can transfer funds to the project that way.
Okay, thank you.
Those are my questions.
Actually, at some point, is there anyone online? Anyone wanted to have a public comment?
We have one member of the public online.
Okay, why don't we hear? Poor person. Oh, do they have their hand up?
They do not have their hand up at this time.
Oh, that's a key factor. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so their hand did just go up. I don't know if we want to take public comment now or?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we do have Robert Zeta. Please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Hey, just a quick question on your top six. So I understand the construction costs for the top two are set and, and have been totally funded. Other than, I heard tonight that we may add a change order to it to repave the orange parking lot. So that cost could go up potentially. But the other four, my question is, and I'm new to the whole process, so forgive me, but just my question is, they're in, ones in bidding, so the bidding one could be more than the 48.6 million and the final design ones could be more than what we're, have as a project cost. Is that correct? And that's all I have.
Mayor Protem, would you like us to answer that?
Sure, please. You can clarify.
That is a correct statement. So Project Connect and I can't recall the other project have already been awarded, so those are set. And the change order won't increase the project cost because we're going to work within the allotment of our change order contingency. But yes, the other projects that are out to bid and will be, will be, bids will be opening May 12th for pavement and May 29th for San Jose Creek Multi-Use Path. So we will have a better idea of costs, but it is a potential that they can go up.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next slide here. So in the packet, we actually had a placeholder slide on the general fund update. And so I was able to work with my staff in coming up with updated, more realistic year-end projections for fiscal year end. And so that very last column here is what we are projecting for June 30th of current fiscal year. Now, this is an important number because it does determine what the projected unassigned fund balance can be. Just wanted to comment on the revenue side. So the 51.86 million, there's a lot, actually a lot of volatility going on right now with our hotels and TOT and sales tax. Just interestingly enough, though, we were able to offset some of those with investment earnings that were recognized one time just because we did take advantage of the inverted yield curve at one point. And so we actually recognized all investment gains and that actually kind of put us a little bit over what we were anticipating. And so those are, those are actual locked-in realized investment earnings. And then going down to the operating expenditures, we did factor in some unspent dollars just related to, you know, unencumbered funds and also recognizing some of that salary savings. And then the capital project expenditure, so that's 17.6, that's just related to the current general fund that's programmed right now to the many of the capital improvement projects. But getting down to the ending fund balance at 22.9 million there. So what that really means, if you plug that in into our, our preliminary budget and you factor in, you know, what was discussed at the previous workshop on April 15th. So on April 15th, we said there was about 2.37 million. There's actually now an additional 1.7 million that we're estimating that can be, you know, programmed toward the CIP for the big six. So this totals 4.07 million. So if you take that 4.07 million netted against that seven, that 7.7 million, that leaves an unfunded gap of about 3 million. And then if we do get that grant award for San Jose Creek, those projects can potentially be fully funded. And so there's a lot of moving pieces here, but we do, do have a plan. And our recommendation is that, you know, once we recognize the, the savings at year end, that it'd be prioritized towards the big six projects just to make sure we can complete those projects. I don't know if City Council has any questions or comments, or I can just go ahead and move on.
Well, I guess the one thing from my perspective is we, you know, I think that we also have the pavement and how we allocate those available funds across pavement and CIP is sort of, we have to think about as Councilmember Riz Martin mentioned earlier.
Yeah, that's a great point and that's actually something too that we're looking at in terms of building that into the budget process of how we prioritize any one-time funding that may be, become available. We'll have that discussion further with Finance Committee. So one of the strategies can be that when there is, you know, a significant, let's say, one-time funding that's identified that we do, you know, we could set aside 50% of it towards pavement and the other 50 to build this bucket up for the CIP. And so we'll continue to have that discussion.
When, when do we find out, by the way, or we don't know when we'll find out about our grant? That's the $11 million. Do we know?
Mayor Protem Kasten, we do not have an estimated date. We were supposed to have a webinar on May 15th that they postponed again. So we do not have a revised date.
Mayor Protem Kasten, just to underscore a point that was subtle that Autumn made earlier. Timing-wise, we have a challenge because we have the $18 million ATP grant. It's out to bid right now and we got, and we have to keep the project moving. So even in the scenario where we get lucky and we end up getting the $11 million grant, we're probably not going to find out about that until after we have to make a decision and move ahead with construction on the project. So I just wanted to underscore that point, which is one we're following.
All right, well, more to come.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. So if you may recall this.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, just to go, to go back to the previous slide. I believe, my understanding is in terms of the, the recommendation of the additional 1.7 billion to go towards CIP, right, that doesn't impact, right, we had sort of talked about sort of rollover funding into pavement into next fiscal year. So I think, is that already sort of locked in in our budget planning?
Yeah, I would, I would say we were very conservative on estimated carryovers.
Okay.
Again, yeah, we, so any budget balance that's for strictly for pavement was assumed to be carried over specifically for pavement.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. I was also going to note in terms of the federal grant, that even, even if there was potential for legal, you know, if, if this, even if the city had some legal justification to fight that, you know, it may not make any difference in terms of the time that it takes to litigate an issue. So frustrating situation. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. So you may recall this table from the last time we had the CIP budget workshop, but just wanted to put it out there. There's two types of main ways to fund capital improvement projects. You have your pay-as-you-go cash and then your pay-as-you-use debt. So we did borrow money just recently for the Cathedral Oaks crib wall and the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path. But just wanted to put that information out there just as a recap of when it's appropriate to use the fund balance or other one-time funds or when it's appropriate to borrow money. Okay, this next slide was just, just an update on our short-term financing strategies and where we stand as of right now. What, what I've circled here was what staff has worked on or has completed and currently working on. So number one, again, that was related to the lease revenue bonds and sales tax revenue bonds. Two through five, again, that's currently what staff is working on as well. Two is to evaluate our solid waste fees and then also direct staff to pursue an updated diff nexus study. We, then the next, number four is to pursue an updated cost allocation plan and comprehensive user fee study. And so that's in Finance's work program. And then Finance staff is also working on their contracts to pursue these tax audits for various fees that we do collect just to ensure we're getting our appropriate amount. The last two is just kind of a, you know, something that we've already done, but it continues to be an ongoing thing. It's number six, it's further evaluate previously established funding allocations from the general fund and then continue to defer projects or reduce funding in the operating budget where we can. And then what was mentioned earlier, establishing this funding policy for future capital improvement projects. But also, you know, we also want to prioritize pavement, so we'll look at that too. And then also the other unfunded liabilities that we may have. And so those are just kind of the short-term solutions that we're going to be evaluating. Then the list of long-term, and the reason why these are on long-term, it's because there's more efforts required, requires, you know, special studies, assessments done, and then also possibly going to voters. I circled here one and two because we are pursuing updating our street lighting assessment rates that were inherited when we incorporated. So right now it's in the process of getting the RFP out and then reviewing those proposals and then evaluating what those rates should look like and then have further discussion with council if we do want to move forward with, with going to voters on that. And then also directing staff to pursue a comprehensive study for stormwater funding to address the unfunded mandates. So again, that's also part of that fee study proposal that's, that's being worked on. And so more discussion to come on, on those types of solutions. But then from last year, it was recommended, and I left this on here, that, you know, in a few years, we may want to consider evaluating potential future revenue enhancement options that is programmed towards CIP. And it can even be pavement, just depending on, you know, what council feels comfortable with. But I just wanted to just remind council that we do have that, that option. And, and some of them that were discussed previously was, you know, with our TOT rate, if we want to be on parity with the other cities within our jurisdictions. We are a business-friendly city. We do not do business license taxes. We purely do a regulatory permit, utility users tax. That's, you know, we also don't have one of those like City of Santa Barbara. A parcel tax was also floated. And then a general obligation bond was actually discussed, mentioned last year. It's similar to what schools do when they need to raise significant amounts of money to fund that really large unfunded capital improvement projects. And then, so I just wanted to put, put that out there that these are just some of the long-term. And then I put other here and that was going to lead me to this next slide. And it's just something that we're kind of looking into, just something kind of, and these are these possibility of evaluating special financing districts. I didn't, I should have listed it on here, but like there's opportunities probably we hear with future development projects, we can evaluate benefit assessment districts, including tax increment financing districts, enhanced infrastructure financing districts. Those, these are kind of a complicated financing mechanism. Just want to point out like a lot of times you'll probably hear these at your conferences and, and how they're being used as economic development tools. From a finance director's perspective, they work when you have partner agencies with these, like to, for scale. And so just wanted to point, you know, so that there are other alternatives out there that can be pursued and utilized. And then again, we'll continue to have further discussions on our funding plan, continue to have updates on the unfunded five-year CIP. Again, there's just a lot of still unknowns too. Like we mentioned earlier, there was the diff nexus study. And so when that does get complete, we'll have updated information on that and really understanding what those amounts look like. There's going to still be competing demands with that new sales tax revenue. We're still learning exactly, you know, the total amounts we'll be receiving this fiscal year. And so that's still, you know, more to come on that. And then key takeaways. So as we wrap up today's Capital Improvement Program Budget Workshop, just want to leave City Council with a few key takeaways. So first, while the city's overall budget is constrained, we are making real progress. Over the next few years, we are going to see some of our largest and most impactful capital projects come to life. We'll have Project Connect, the Train Depot, San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path and the Galita Valley Library improvements. And then, you know, again, to fund those priorities, we did issue those lease revenue bonds and sales tax revenue bonds. That again was an important move for our city because our general fund could not support that, those, you know, the project cost. And then, you know, it's going to be challenging. Diff revenues are limited in one time. We may have to continue to look at possible budget reductions along with deferred maintenance, reevaluate our changes in contracts. And as I was mentioning earlier, we do need to start setting aside one-time funds, building it into the budget process for building maintenance and facility renewal, including even our pension and OPEB liabilities and then CIP and then pavement. And then just wanted to just reemphasize, any new projects, programs or increase in contracts will most likely, you know, need an offsetting reduction just going forward from now. So what we have is a status quo budget that can sustain status quo service levels, even with the small, you know, cost escalators. But if you're adding enhanced service levels, that's going to drive the cost up. It's going to be difficult to maintain that. And so in short, you know, future revenue enhancements are recommended to be pursued in the long run. Or, you know, if council wishes to direct staff to reduce expenditures, that's something we can also take a look at. And then we, just bringing this slide back up again, just want to recap really what our priority focus is on is on that big six. And then looking ahead, this is a update on the calendar, so we're here May 6th. We do have a, you know, a back update for the budget workshop if it's needed on June 3rd. But ultimately plan to, you know, make some revisions and then provide a final budget for adoption at the upcoming budget hearing on June 17th. And then so with that, you know, I'll turn it over to council, but these, these are some of the questions that we've kind of actually already had this discussion, but if council wanted to revisit anything, any projects that council wants to discuss or would like more information on, any other concerns City Council? would like more information on, any other concerns city council may have, or if there's any budget reductions or revenue enhancement options, city council would like staff to further evaluate. Council feedback is welcome.
Councilmember Rayce Martin.
Thank you. I don't have any additional comments on the CIP budget and everything we've, we've gone through. I think we've all, I've shared a lot of my comments already, but I did just want to say how much I truly appreciate your hard work, Mr. Rio and your team. We don't always get you presenting in front of us and just how impressive all the information has been, and I think especially getting us to a place where we have a funding plan. And to councilmember Kiriako's point, a large percentage of these big projects, especially the big six, we have a plan. We know that there's uncertainty and some things could happen and we may need to revisit, but we are in as good of a position as we could be. And that is in large part due to your exemplary leadership on, in a really tough pickle that we gave you to try to problem solve. And so I really appreciate it. I think, you know, when I'm out in the community talking to folks, there's a lot of economic uncertainty right now, and that certainly applies to cities and organizations. And I feel very reassured having your expertise and your leadership and that of your team. So thank you for, for all of this.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I, I want to echo the comments on, I really thought the, the report and presentation prepared by, by staff was very well done. And I feel like it's for the public as well, just more understandable and digestible in terms of where we are. And, and I think, you know, sort of big, big picture, right? I think what we're really seeing on, on top of external factors that are beyond our control, but as, as a city, right, we've reached our young adulthood and, right, we, we do have some important, right? We have our biggest public works project in the city's history. We have, right, maintenance of our, our city properties that have been, been acquired or like our parks that have been developed and things over the years. So I think we're, we're, what we're sort of seeing is a little bit of that transition into, okay, you know, we, we need, we need to start thinking about how are we sort of planning for that future maintenance ongoing? So I think it'll be important for us to continue planning to, to maintain what we already have. I do think it'll be helpful. I don't know if it's necessarily another hearing, but I know when we, we discuss these items and we sort of view this in a, in a silo, and then it's always nice to sort of see it back in, in terms of the big picture of, of the budget, in terms of sort of where things shake out. So I'm not, in any case, I do, I do think I want to make sure to have some, some time to review any, any final budget. So I don't know if it's necessarily another, another meeting, but if there is any possible way that that information could be released early, earlier than the, the usual process for review, but I, I just throw that out. I don't know if any other council members have any thoughts there. But just put that out, that sometimes having a little bit for these big items, having a little extra time for both the public and council members can be helpful. And then, you know, I know we've had discussions of different items, you know, and, and I'm certainly open, you know, we'll continue to reevaluate if a year from now, if there's something and, and we're in a different position and we need to reevaluate what's on the five-year list, I, I remain open to sort of that ongoing dialogue with, with the council members because things can change quickly, even within a year. So I'm open, open to feedback. In terms of the questions, I, I sort of feel like in terms of, I feel like in terms of where we are is this, we're pretty sort of, I think, maxed out at the moment in terms of, there's already sort of been the identified revenue enhancement options that are being explored, but right, like we've, we've, we've already done our, our current bonds. We have a, a sales tax that we're still sort of evaluating what that's looking like and what's ongoing. So I at least think for now, we're sort of working within what we have is sort of my, my general thought. There's a few things mentioned there at the end that I don't know about or understand, so, so I'm, I'm open to discussion there, but in terms of some of those bigger items of, you know, other revenue streams, I think with a lot of the economic uncertainty right now, I think, I don't know that, that now is the time to pursue some of those options, but we can sort of, you know, reevaluate where we are down the line. So those are some general thoughts, thank you.
Councilmember Kiria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I, I think what I'm taking away from, from tonight is that this is a council and a staff team that has moved mountains to make sure that we're keeping our promises to the public, whether they were promises that were made five years ago or 40 years ago. And there's, I, I think that's really good because it builds trust in government, but you can't do it without a staff, you can't do it without professional expertise. Council can provide vision, council can provide direction and leadership, but at the end of the day, you need people that can execute. And so I'll just echo the comments that were made from some of my colleagues about the, the leadership, whether it's Mr. Rio or, or others. I think that we've really, we've really come a long way in a short period of time, and there's definitely a financial cost to it and we're feeling it. It doesn't help that there have been some federal changes that are impacting local financing and it's unfortunate that there's some, some promises that were made to us that are not being kept by others, but I'll kind of leave that there. In terms of, you know, things for the future, I'd be interested in learning more about infrastructure districts and some of these other ideas that were kind of floated as possible ideas, like councilmember Smith, I don't know enough about them to really comment in any great detail, but perhaps there's a, a clearly defined area that could benefit and a very clear nexus between how the funds would be raised and where the funds would be spent. And I think if we can find, if we can find opportunities to do that, and I'm not even clear at this point where in the city we would be looking to put this, put this into account, into, into place, but, you know, I think those are some ideas worth exploring. They've been tried in other places and talked about in other places, and I'd like to learn more about what that would, what that would look like here. The tax increment financing idea is an interesting idea. So those would be a couple of things I'd be interested in, in looking, looking at more in the kind of short to medium term. In the long term, I think all options are on the table because we don't know what the, what the future will hold and we have to be, we will have to be nimble and agile aware needed. So thank you.
I guess I, I just had a few more questions with the, what is the difference between the big six and then it's actually three more projects that you have? The Galleta Storm Drain Master Plan, the Old Town, full cap, full trash capture and the Wing Wall Culver. What is the obligation in a sense that we have there and why are they, is it a big nine or is it a big six?
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll take this one first because I think I was the first one to coin the, the big five and then Public Works did add a sixth one to it. So originally, the idea behind that was ones that are funded right in front of us now that we are recommending, that we focus on to get them done successfully. That was the big five. That was right after we borrowed the money and, and got, well, the grant. The sixth one was added because it's related to Project Connect and it is a mandate that goes back quite a ways. And again, if we get the $11 million grant, that provided an avenue to add that one to the list because it is a mandate. So that was the idea behind that. So yes, seven, eight, nine, as you saw tonight, there are more projects, but from staff's perspective, they were not elevating to the big six because the idea when that was first coined was the ones that are funded and are going, are going to, we need to get constructed.
Because the, well, here's the, what I'm not clear on. The other three, the heading is other upcoming quote must-do priority projects and in which it's cited that there's some sort of regulatory compliance or imminent public safety concern. So I guess I'm curious if it's, what's our obligation for those others? Are they, are they less of a regulatory compliance or is the regulatory compliance outside of the next five years? It's within the next 10 years?
Mayor Protem Kazdin, for instance, the full trash capture has to be fully implemented by 2030 and that's a mandate.
Okay, so that's a five-year window.
And the Wing Wall is potentially an imminent danger. And then what was the third project?
The other one was the full cap, full, no, Galleta Storm Drain Master Plan.
Yeah, that's one that we want to do with the upcoming MS4 permit and to know what our infrastructure is, so we can plan to potentially do preventative maintenance to our pipes versus doing sinkhole repairs.
So that one is, I guess, it's more of a good, a good defendable, appropriate project as opposed to there being some sort of legal or regulatory or grant-based requirement.
It's best practices and it will help us in the long term.
Okay. So in other words, the other ones, if you were doing, this would be the ninth out, if you were ranking them, this would be the ninth out of the nine projects. You're entertained.
I was just going to say we should call it the big 10. It just keeps growing.
Round it out.
Well, I mean, I guess it, it comes down, you know, more and more as we have these, these requirements, it sort of negates all of the entertaining discussion we've had on, you know, bike paths or you name it, if essentially these nine or something are what we're doing. Are there any, is there any of these that, just for curiosity, where we've, that we've incorporated, that they're going to be done within the next several years and where, and there's a certain amount of general fund money that's being freed up, that's going to become available for other things? That's after three years, I guess, right? That you said it's, we've got a three-year window where we're really up against it and then I guess some general fund money or other sorts of money is opened up? Is that right?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, I think what you're referring to is possible, the possibility of, you know, it's the possibility that if we did get that, that 11.16 grant.
I wasn't thinking of that. I was just thinking of if we've been for using other, just dipping into general fund or, or committing money from, that could be freed up after these projects are committed or completed, rather.
Yes, so that, there is a possibility because there is, like was previously shown about seven, a little over 17 million in the general fund in the current year budget that's programmed towards CIP. Those tend to get carried over until the CIP project is complete. Once it's complete, generally that general fund gets released back to the general fund and can be reprogrammed.
And I guess the one other source of revenue that I gather you haven't incorporated is if we have a flow of DIF money associated with new project, new housing development, whether the county or ours, that presumably it will be available to fund a lot of things.
Yeah, that's correct.
Depending on the schedule that they.
Right, that's correct. And also with the DIF Nexus study being updated and the fees being updated. And then one of the components we didn't really touch on, but is when we did the assumptions for Measure A, we assumed the baseline amount, a fixed amount. So if there's incremental growth with Measure A sales tax that does become available, those can be eligible for transportation-related projects, though however, we are recommending that that gets prioritized towards pavement when, when we do recognize additional Measure A.
When the DIF money, let's say, when a project, when, when does they pay into our accounts? Is it after completion of the project or at what stage, just for? In other words, most of these projects, the county, ours, et cetera, are not, not likely to be all completed within five years even. When would, when do they pay up?
Generally, it's at certificate of occupancy or when they do, you know, submit their permits. We've had cases where some developers will prepay early the DIFs just to save on the construction cost inflation adjustment.
Okay. All right, well, those are my questions. Any from the public? Any other public comment? Or public questions?
Yes, if any other member of the public wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call on you. I'm seeing none, Mayor Protempor.
Well, let's, ready for deliberation time?
Do we need to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, do you, that's a good question. Do we need it? No, you've got what you need. Okay.
Actually, Mayor Protem, just to address councilmember Smith's point there at the end about making sure there's enough time as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. So I think there's a couple of options, as you saw in the schedule that was provided. There is a placeholder for June 3 if we needed it. I would say based on what we heard tonight, a couple, we heard some, some minor changes, move a few projects to the long-term, move a few projects to the five-year. There wasn't enough that we heard that we would advise using that placeholder, but on the other hand, we want to make sure we're being responsive to the comment that councilmember Smith made. So that is a way to provide more time if you guys need it. The other way, as was suggested, if we do stick to the schedule of June 17, is to attempt to get that packet out, say, two days earlier. So we would look at Monday, I don't want to put my staff on the spot, but that's what I heard and that would be the other thing we could do. Okay.
Okay. All right, then, thank you for your excellent presentation and let's do it again sometime. Okay, do any councilmembers have any standing committee reports or comments?
Yes, I can report, the ordinance review committee did meet on May 1. We reviewed sort of following up on council direction from 2024. We followed up on some proposed adjustments, amendments to the tenant protection ordinance, and so there was a good discussion. And so that has gone back to staff to follow up and that will come back to council at a later date.
Thank you. Councilmember Rayce Martin.
I had just a couple of things I wanted to note. On April 17, I attended the 3CE Electrifier Home Workshop at the Galleta Valley Community Center. It was well-attended. It was great to hear from 3CE and they shared a lot of great information for homeowners about how they can electrify their home and different programs and rebates that are available to them. And then last week on the 30th, I attended the Reach Economic Roundtable. That was also at the community center, so that was a really great meeting. Our city manager was there and it was great to see Ms. Kern present some of the work that Galleta has been doing on economic development and also hear from folks at the county and in other parts of other, other cities. So that continues to be a great group to connect with. And then lastly, I also last week attended a luncheon hosted by Santa Barbara Airbus to celebrate their 3 million LAX passengers. So that was really neat to go and celebrate that with them. I'm a big congratulations to Santa Barbara Airbus.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiria.
Sure, a few things. On the evening of April 16, I attended the ceremony. Sure, a few things. On the evening of April 16, I attended the Ceremonia de Emprendimiento, which was a graduation ceremony for early childhood educators that are getting training on how to open childcare businesses and other small businesses through funding supported by the city of Galita. On the 17th, I attended the 3CE Community Workshop. Try to see if there's anything else interesting I want to mention. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
If I can make one more?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We hosted, the city hosted a coffee and community event this last Saturday, May 3, and I was there, and we were hosted by Home Plate Grill. And so we were just, you know, thrilled at their generosity and support. And it was a really great way to engage with neighbors and hear their questions, you know, in a different way other than a formal council meeting. And so I wanted to thank everybody who attended and encourage people to, you know, stay in touch, stay engaged. And also thank all the, all the staff who came out as well on their, on their weekend to join for that event. So, and I look forward to, to hearing about, you know, which councilmembers will have the next one. It was a great event.
Great. Thank you. And seeing no one else, city attorney, do you have anything to report?
I just want to add my congratulations to Dawn for her service. And as someone that's relatively recent for the city, she left a big impression over the time I got to work with her.
That's nice. Thank you. Well, this meeting is adjourned.